Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 3rd, 2000 -- excuse me. August 3rd, 2011, meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mencken.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Havlin.
Here. Before we go into item number three, which is approval of the meeting agenda, I want to turn to our city manager, Scott Neal, to introduce one of the city's newest hires.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm honored tonight to introduce our new assistant city manager. Her name is Karen Kurt. Karen is joining us for her first council meeting. She started her new job on August -- or on August 1st, on Monday. And I think I'll just turn to Karen, and she can introduce herself a little bit about who she is and where she's coming from. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just want to say I'm very excited to be a member of the Adana staff. I'm not lucky enough to live in Adana, but I live about six blocks from the border, so I spend a lot of time here, and I know what a wonderful community it is. I've spent most of my career in human resources. I have a bachelor's degree in industrial labor relations from Cornell University. I've did some graduate work at the University of Minnesota, and I've worked in a variety of public and private organizations. But as part of a career transition, I actually have been working on a master's degree in urban and regional studies, and my most recent position was with the City of Eden Prairie as the Human Resources and Support Services Manager. And so that's a little bit about me, and again, I'm very, very excited to be here.
Thank you. Well, welcome. We're pleased to have you. We had you with us earlier this evening at a work session with the Bike Adana Task Force, and it was nice to have you up there with us as well, and welcome on board. We're so pleased to have you here.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next matter before us is approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded. We approve the meeting agenda as shown. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I will request, when we get down to that point, that we table item 8D, the recommendation for the solar panel project. But I think I would ask that the council leave it on the agenda, and I'll give you an update when we get to that point. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay, good. And I meant -- I did try to check in with you after lunch. I had a meeting over the noon hour on that same issue, and I think tabling is a good notion, but we'll deal with that as we come up on the matter. So we've got a motion and a second for approval of the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next, item four, adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to remove item 4E, please.
4E. All right, anyone else?
Your Honor, item 4C and 4D, please.
And I wanted to remove the minutes of my work session on July 19. I have a question for my colleagues before that gets approved, so.
So you want a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 19th and the B received payment of claims, so.
Correct. Oh, yeah, correct. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. On the work session minutes, that last sentence in the last full paragraph, I had a question for my colleagues, because the language on the -- and that sentence beginning with the words "if the inventory indicates a need for a sports dome, the park board will determine the best location," et cetera.
Yeah.
I didn't think that we had determined that the inventory was a predicate for the park board looking at the issue of whether or not a sports dome was appropriate, and indeed, in a later agenda item, there isn't that conditional requirement. So I'm thinking that that language should have been worded differently, but I wanted to check with my colleagues first.
I didn't ask for the inventory, so I'm going to stand aside and let the colleagues that did request this talk.
I did request the inventory and understood that it would be a baseline for ongoing discussions, not only about a sports dome, but also about possible consolidation or moving of other city facilities, what we could gain with budget savings. So to me, what would be problematic with this sentence, and I did not catch it in my proofreading, I'm sorry, is the linkage of the inventory to the next -- to an if-then step on the part of the park board. I see them as being two different things, and I do see the inventory as being predicate or a first step, but that --
But not a condition.
Concurrent.
Not an automatic movement, too.
Is that what your --
Concurrent, yes, but also I don't recall that we directed the park board to complete that inventory. I thought that would be staff level.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, so. I'm sorry. That's the way that the action is drawn up in the actual action item on the agenda tonight, is how you described it.
So, Your Honor, change the words on line two. Change the words "the park board" to "city staff" to complete a facilities inventory?
Correct.
We didn't direct them yet.
No, but.
We directed them in the --
In support.
Yeah.
I'm not directing them.
Yeah, we didn't take any action. Is that what you're getting to, Member Brindle? At the work session, we didn't take any action.
Yes, yes. The item on tonight's agenda is the one that would direct them to do a facilities inventory, and therefore, to have that be stated in the minutes in past tense that it occurred -- that that directive occurred on July 19 seems incorrect to me.
Well, we requested that -- we did request that staff complete the inventory, and now it's for formal adoption tonight. I don't think that's inconsistent. We requested it then, and now we're formally passing it.
So we'd rather use the word "request."
Requested.
Member Brindle, that would give you more comfort.
It sounds like, yeah, a request, because that's what we did. Sure. Requested that city staff.
So the council requested staff, strike directed the park board, and then strike that first portion of the last sentence, strike the words "if the inventory indicates a need for a sports dome."
Yes. You could say if it is determined to go forward or to pursue a sports dome, park board will determine best location.
I thought we already determined that they would.
That was their job.
Study it, so that.
Right, but that was studying whether or not it was needed, as well as whether or not.
Correct.
Where it would be located. Right, it's not just where it's located and who operates, it's also whether or not it's, in fact, needed and cost-effective.
I think there was some discussion that the study of the facilities and usage was going to happen almost simultaneously with the park board at least looking at sites. I meant.
So how about the council directed staff to complete a facilities inventory and concurrently directed the park board to study the need, feasibility, and possible locations for a sports dome, and whether it should be operated by the city, et cetera.
All right, here's another idea, just for that last sentence. The park board will study the feasibility of a sports dome and consider issues, including -- and then you could have location, ownership, instead of whether it should be operated by the city. Ownership.
And funding. That'd be under ownership.
And funding. Yeah, why don't we just do it that way? Is that great comfort for folks?
I do like Member Sprague's suggestion of the words "need for," because I think feasibility is sort of whether or not you can make something happen, but need is whether or not you need to make it happen. So I think those words are important.
All right. Study the need for a sports dome and consider issues, including ownership. Then we should have feasibility in there, I suppose. Ownership, feasibility, funding.
Are you asking them how they want -- would like to fund it? Because you don't usually ask them that.
There was a question of whether it would be operated as a city facility or whether it would.
No, I get that. That was in a previous word, ownership.
Okay.
So I don't normally see the park board or any of our boards or commissions coming forth with bonding recommendations, so.
Fair enough.
I don't really think we're asking them to come forward with bonding recommendations. I think I would take the funding piece off.
Funding was not in our discussion.
No.
At least not to a large degree.
Agreed.
Last week, so, or last time.
Okay, so we're comfortable with taking that off. Thank you.
Yes, please, I am.
I noticed in the item 8B, that document talks about the park board's completing a feasibility study, which would include all these different elements. So I wonder if we could do it that way, just say on the last sentence, "The park board will conduct a feasibility study."
That's all encompassing.
For the construction of an indoor athletic facility.
Feasibility, you're concerned that doesn't include need for, but it does, because if it's not feasible, then.
It include -- yeah, that would include the need assessment, I think.
Right.
And I think we have to be really.
Feasibility would be needs assessment, ownership.
I don't mean to beat this thing to death, but here, why don't we settle on something? Does somebody have a proposal for that last sentence?
Well, my proposal is that we get the subject right, and that is that city staff.
No, we directed the park board to look at the feasibility of -- I'll use the word feasibility, of a private -- or not a private, but an indoor athletic facility, I guess is a better word to put it.
Okay, Your Honor, what if we state, "The council requested that city staff complete a facilities inventory of current facilities to determine cities' needs, period."
That's good.
It concurrently directed the park board to study the feasibility of a sports dome, including the issues of location, ownership.
Location and ownership.
And that's it? Okay.
That'd be fine with me.
I guess, did we talk about operation? Operations? Okay. I mean, that's fine with me, too.
That would be contained in ownership.
That's good enough. I mean, these are -- all right. With those changes made, is the council comfortable? I'll move those amended work session minutes of July 19, 2011.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. C is Member Sprague, Traffic Safety Committee report.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I see that the attachments to the report said draft Adana ETC meeting minutes of July 21, and I like to see that. Is there a way to do that as a matter of course, getting the draft minutes up to us? Because I know there's still some timing issues between the ETC and their discussions and the council. Is that?
Mr. Sprague, yes, we will be able to do that, include the draft meeting minutes on these kind of submittals like this. This is kind of the new format we'll be moving forward with. We'll always be taking these and moving them forward to you, including the draft minutes, so that you get these as quickly as possible, can act on them, and we can make the appropriate infield adjustments, new signage, new striping, things like that in the field, so we can minimize the lag time between the ETC stopoff and council approval now. So you'll be seeing these moving forward. This will be a consistent type of application in the coming months.
Thank you for that. Also, in the first paragraph, Wednesday, July 6, 2011, it says, "They," meaning the residents, were informed that if they disagree with the recommendation or have additional facts to present, they can be included on the July 21, 2011 ETC, I guess, agenda? And then on to the August 3rd council agenda, is that the new process? Okay. Thank you for that as well. That's -- I think that's a great improvement. On to the substantive section, section B, the crosswalk denial on Vander Vork and Rutledge.
Is that number one?
Yes, number one. I'm just wondering, the standard is 20 pedestrians for every -- a minimum of two hours every eight-hour period. How do we get to that standard? Is that a longstanding standard? And the reason why I ask is I know we've had a shift in philosophy on pedestrian and biking, and I just want to make sure that that's still relevant.
Yep. Councilmember Sprague and council, when we -- about four or five years ago, I believe, is when we updated the pedestrian crossings, if you recall, when we put in the flashing crossings put down by 51st and Halifax, and we updated the policy. And this, and we relooked at all the different types of crosswalks and based it off of basically the Institution of Transportation Engineers manual. So it's based off of an international standard, essentially.
Okay. Thank you. And with regards to three, the yield sign on Kellogg, what -- I think there's confusion. What's the threshold for moving from yield to stop or from stop to yield, and what are the different uses for those signs?
Yeah. Commissioner Sprague and councilmembers, typically a yield sign is used in a situation where you're just trying to define the right-of-way at an intersection. It's used at a lot of four-way intersections to define a right-of-way yield condition for one of the directions, sometimes at a T-intersection, but it's more intuitive. A stop sign application, though, has to meet certain criteria. We tend to get a lot more vehicles per hour, upwards of the 300 cars per hour. There's other criteria that we could go into more detail on, but the yield sign truly is just for that assigning right-of-way. The stop sign is for more definitive assignment of right-of-way, as well as some traffic control. In a case like in this instance here, the volumes are considerably lower than what would trigger the stop sign request or stop sign installation, and that's the reason for the denial here. We have a lot of intersection in town that are uncontrolled or controlled yield signs, and it's just because the traffic volumes are so low, they don't meet that similar standard as Director Huila mentioned about following the ITE manual and the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices criteria that they set forth.
Okay, thank you. Number three, section C, number three, request for no parking signs on the 6200 block of Hillside. Now, this is around Countryside Park. I know we have perennial parking issues in the area. Are there any other streets that we're going to look at in conjunction with this request? Seeing as it's more of an area-wide issue.
Sure. This neighborhood, this street is one street within a neighborhood that's being positioned for reconstruction next year, and with our Neighborhood Traffic Improvement Program that we have, Neighborhood Traffic -- Neighborhood Street Improvement Program that we have in place, we'll be asking the residents through our survey this fall, are they seeing these same type of issues? Are they -- do they see traffic problems? Do they see parking issues? It'll help us to gather some more information as to this area and this location. Is it a systematic kind of concern, or is it just a general concern with one or two residents in the area? So I think our staff at this time suggested that we kind of hold off until we know more information, as we'll be gathering here in the coming months. We're actually going to be holding open houses starting in September for this neighborhood, so we'll be able to engage them in that process at that time. So we're just a month or two away from getting -- collecting a lot more data.
And you look at just beyond the street and more area-wide, you know, because there's many. Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot.
Member Bennett, you had a couple of questions?
They were answered, thank you.
All right, good. You want to move the matter?
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. We adopt the Traffic Safety Committee report of July 6, 2011. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter is also Member Sprague, the proposed agreement with Waldorf and Nevin Cleaners.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I heard you state last week that you might consider adding confession of judgment. I assume that that was either not acceptable, or was that matter presented to the?
The item was presented. City attorney did prepare an additional agreement that incorporated the new confession of judgment requirement. Mr. Zahos is aware of that. He executed this agreement instead of that one, so we -- he is aware that he needs to execute both the new agreement and the confession of judgment, and will -- has told us today that he will do that if the council approves that document tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Member Sprague, any other questions on that matter? Member Sprague, would you move the passage of that along -- a condition on him also signing the confession of judgment on behalf of Waldorf Development Services, LLP?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter we have is the parking -- the contract, the parking lot improvements. Member Bennett.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have a question or questions specifically about the Countryside Park parking lot. It's my understanding that it is the parking lot on the southwest corner of the park. Am I correct?
That -- councilmember Bennett and council, the parking lot is actually -- it would be the southwest or just directly west of the park, yes.
And then I also -- do I also understand correctly that the spaces, the 99 spaces in that parking lot count toward the total number of parking spaces required for Colonial Church?
As I understand it, and I haven't refreshed myself with the agreement, actually, Park and Recreation Director John Kiprios is -- this is his project, actually, but he's more refreshed. But I understand that there is an agreement with the Colonial Church that utilizes that parking lot.
So there's -- so the, not only the 99 spaces count toward the parking total, but there's actual physical use of the lot as well?
I believe so, because, yeah, there is, yeah.
And that has existed, it's my understanding, since 1977?
I believe so, yeah.
Has there been any financial participation by the church in the costs of maintenance or repair or replacement of that parking lot since 1977?
I don't believe there has been.
Was the church approached for a request to share in the cost of the work that is before us this evening?
Yes, Director Kiprios actually had approached the church to ask them if they would be willing to help fund this project, and the answer was no.
Okay, so we have before us a parking lot replacement that is budgeted in the CIP at $60,000. The low bid came in at $10,396 over estimated budget. We are well under the engineer's estimate, I understand. Thank you for clarity on this. I will move approval of this issue.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, that completes the work on the items removed from the consent agenda. We have no special recognitions or presentations this evening. We'll move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have one public hearing matter with us for the council this evening, and that is to consider the amended site plan and preliminary and final plats for the Waters Senior Convalescent Home Project 6200 Colonial Way. As a predicate, I'm going to tell the proponent, you'll have 15 minutes for folks that want to speak in favor of or against the proposed project. You'll have three minutes each. You'll be timed with the lights, and we'll get there in a moment, but the first thing I had asked the city attorney to do was to kind of set the stage for us in terms of identifying the issues that we need to address as a council and the legal standards that we need to be mindful of or employ as we address both the request for an amended site plan and the preliminary and final plat potential approval. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has previously amended its comprehensive plan to re-guide the property from public, semi-public, to high-density residential, and has previously rezoned the property from R1 to PRD 5. The guiding and rezoning decisions have already been made, and not before the council this evening. The city has also previously approved the final development plan, now referred to as a site plan. We changed the nomenclature and our -- updated our zoning ordinance. There are two issues tonight. First, the site plan approval. If the application before the city council to amend the site plan is denied, or if the applicant withdraws the application, the approved site plan will stand as approved. So if you don't approve the site -- amendment to the site plan, then the existing site plan stands as approved. In reviewing a site plan application, the city is acting -- not acting as a policymaker. It is acting as in a quasi-judicial capacity. It is applying the facts as presented to you to our ordinances and plans. If the site plan meets our ordinance and plan requirements, then the city lacks discretion to turn it down. This is not a conditional use permit process. The city cannot attach conditions in the normal way it can to a conditional use permit. What the city can do is if it finds something, a deviation from your ordinances, you can require a change to come into compliance with your ordinances and other -- your comprehensive plan and whatnot. Final and -- excuse me, preliminary and final plat approval. The city previously approved the preliminary plat, is in front of you tonight, but that approval lapsed because they did not proceed with the final plat within one year. Again, in reviewing a subdivision application, the city is not acting as a policymaker, as it does, for example, when you amend your zoning ordinance or amend your comprehensive plan. It is acting as a quasi -- in a quasi-judicial capacity, applying the facts to the established ordinances. The proposed subdivision meets the ordinance requirements. The city lacks discretion to deny it. Those are the standards for you tonight.
All right. Thank you. Member Bennett, question for council?
Yes. Attorney Knutson, I have a question regarding the correspondence of two provisions of our code. They are 810.03 subdivision 3 -- I'm sorry, subdivision 2, plating for transferring land. It states, "Any land transferred from one zoning district to another zoning district, excluding, however, transfers to or from the Heritage Preservation Overlay District or Floodplain Overlay District, shall be platted in full compliance with this section, section 850 of this code and the comprehensive plan, in connection with, at the time of, and as a condition to such transfer." Looking at that provision and looking at code provision 810.10, which is the review and approval process for land use plating and zoning, section subdivision 3, final approval, letter C, which you, I believe, referred to earlier in terms of the expiration of the plat, that states, "If the supplementary report of the planner is not submitted to the council by the first anniversary date of the council resolution granting preliminary approval, the plat or subdivision shall be deemed abandoned and withdrawn and of new effect, and a new application shall be filed, and the plat or subdivision again submitted for review and action pursuant to this section." And I do, if I understand correctly, it's under that provision that the request for preliminary plat has been brought forward this evening, because the plat, in fact, lapsed, correct?
That is also my understanding.
Then how do those two provisions fit together? If the plat has been, in fact, vacated by inaction during the year when the application for final plat had to be brought, how does the provision 81003 requiring that there be a plat as a predicate to the rezoning?
Well, they did present a plat at the time as a predicate to the rezoning, but the plat lapsed. And specifically under Minnesota Statute 462.358, it provides that if you do not proceed with the final plat within one year, the city may require you to start over again.
Yes, I understand that.
But there is no comparable provision for rezoning. Once an ordinance is adopted, rezoning property, that ordinance stands unless you go through the process again, which you can always do with property, and again, rezone it to something else.
So in other words, although 810.03 requires a plat for rezoning, if that plat has expired or been vacated, the rezoning still stands?
Yes, it does.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Questions for our city attorney before we turn it over to Director Teague? Okay. Director Teague, I want to take this matter from the staff perspective.
Members of the council, I think you're all familiar with the location of this property on Crosstown Highway, just west of Tracy Avenue, south of the Countryside Park. What the applicant is requesting here, again, is an amendment to their site plan for the purpose of reducing the size of the building so they can create seven affordable housing units. Specifically, they would be taking 28 feet out of the middle of the building. To accommodate that, they would be losing 36 underground parking stalls, one surface stall, and some reconfiguration of the building. They would -- the width of the entry would be reduced, some office space reduced, the cafe and dining areas would be reduced in size, and a gathering room would be eliminated. The building would still contain 139 units, so there's no change in terms of the number of units. still contain 139 units, so there's no change in terms of the number of units that would be within the building. It's a side-by-side look of, at the approved building on the top and the revised below. As you can see, it's, it's difficult to see any changes there. Closer look at the approved building. You'll notice when I click on the next slide that there will be some changes located in this area here. That's where the, the revisions take place. Just quickly go back and forth, you can see those changes. Also, the, again, the applicant is requesting a preliminary and final plat. The preliminary plat, as Mr. Knutson had indicated, had expired. There's no changes proposed before you, to the plat that you approved in a preliminary form last year. Part of the reason for the delay, you may recall, was the applicant was negotiating for park dedication and what that would entail. The park dedication in this case with the final plat that's required is $5,000 per unit, so there would be a total of $695,000 required for park dedication. That would be due prior to the city releasing the final plat to the applicant so they can take those down to the county to file. So those monies would be collected at that time. The primary issues that were considered by staff and at the planning commission at their last meeting last month, is the site plan amendment and the plat reasonable for the site? And we believe that it is, essentially for three reasons. First, the project is consistent with the, with the approved plan that was approved by the council last summer. The building is simply reduced in size. There's no change to site circulation, the landscape planner, and again, the number of units. Secondly, the number of, or the parking requirements would still be met with this, with the proposal, even with the elimination of one surface stall and 36 enclosed stalls. For a convalescent home, which by definition of Edina zoning ordinance, is a building that's licensed by the state of Minnesota for the care of the aged, so for that convalescent use, 74 parking state spaces are required. The site plan indicates there would be 72 parking spaces, surface parking state spaces, and 54 enclosed, so there would be a little over 50 stalls in excess of what our code requires. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission in regard to convalescent home and the zoning of this site. Again, as Mr. Knutson has indicated, the property has already been rezoned to the PRD 5 designation, and the comprehensive plan has been amended. Again, a convalescent home is defined by ordinance as a care for the aged that's licensed by the state. The applicant has provided licenses for, from two of their existing facilities, the one in Eden Prairie and the one in Minneapolis, to demonstrate that this new facility, which is going to be like those, will be licensed through the state of Minnesota. Lastly, the revisions would enable the city to obtain seven affordable housing units that would go toward our goal with the Met Council for affordable housing. So in conclusion, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the site plan amendment, the preliminary and final plat, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. So with that, I can stand for questions.
All right, one clarification. What was, what was the vote in the planning commission?
The amended site plan was 7-0, and the plat was 6-1. The one dissenting vote, I think there was some confusion over the preliminary and final plat. It was Commissioner Forrest, and she had some concerns about approving both the preliminary and the final plat. But with the final plat, typically the planning commission doesn't even review those. They just review the preliminary plat, and once that's been approved by the council, the final plat is brought back just to the city council for approval.
Okay, thank you. Member Bennett?
Yes, I, Director Teague, I watched that meeting yesterday and took notes, and that was not Commissioner Forrest's objection. She was not confused about, about preliminary and final plat. She understood what was being done, but since there was the question of preliminary plat, she felt that it was valid to consider what the code requires for findings to support that preliminary plat, since, again, it was preliminary and final. And her words were quite critical of the code and what a mess has been created. So I just wanted to make sure that the record stood corrected on that. If no one else has some questions, I do have, I have a question about the basis for the computation of the parking. I understand that it's based on, I believe, 169 residents. How was that number reached?
That was in conversations with the applicant. They indicated that their maximum occupancy of the building would be 169 residents.
What regulatory control, or since the, the building will have 139 units, correct?
Correct.
Forty-two of those are memory and care suites?
That, I, I don't know off the top of my head. That sounds correct.
Okay. And 97 will be one and two-bedroom units? So the number 169 comes from where?
Might be a question for the applicant if they have those, those figures. Again, what they've indicated to me is 169 is the maximum capacity for residents.
Okay. I will have questions for the proponent, but from a city perspective, is there any regulatory authority that the city has with respect to that number?
Just in regard to that parking, that determines the number of parking spaces that there, that there are required.
Once the parking is approved, what authority, if any, does the city have regarding the number of occupants of that building?
Well, if they were to increase the, the occupancy there, we would, if we were to receive a complaint on it, we would have to, to follow up with an inspection to make sure they're still in compliance with the parking regulation. They've got 50 stalls to work with here.
Fifty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it would be a complaint-driven process, in other words, because I did note that at the end of the planning commission, before the vote was taken, both Commissioner Carpenter and Commissioner Forrest were interested in seeing some kind of perhaps proof of parking. Those words were not used, but some assurance that there was, in fact, sufficient parking, given all the other discussions that have accompanied this matter. And I note that that was not rolled into the motion or recommendations of the, of the planning commission, although there was no rejection of the idea. It just doesn't appear.
Yeah. Another way that, that staff monitors that would be through building permits. You know, if we get a permit in for some significant remodeling of the space within the unit, that would come to our attention that way, too, to ensure the parking.
All right. Thank you.
Member Swanson?
To that, because Director Teague and I met about a week or two ago to talk about the proof of parking that we used to use a lot when I was on planning commission. And I asked him to prepare a site plan that could show 18 spaces that we could use if we needed to call a proof of parking, if we had a parking issue. Did you bring that with you?
I did.
Can you put it on the overhead? Proof of parking is something that I know Gordon Johnson, who led the planning commission for 10, the 10 years I served on it, recommended using all the time. I don't know if we actually ever had to call it in, but it at least gave people in the neighborhood who were concerned about the parking issue, the knowledge that these, there was room actually to build these and that we could request it should the parking not be, be enough. So can you show me what you have? Because I think you brought forth a suggestion of 18 additional spaces, or did we go up to 24?
Yeah, well, what I've, there's actually 29 here. What I did was add spaces that would comply with our PSR, senior residential.
Because that was one of the concerns I remember when I watched the planning commission meeting, is that this to them felt like a PSR, therefore the parking wasn't going to be sufficient. So that's what you did, is PSR would normally need 100 and... You're adding 29 to 126, so I assume that's 155.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Member Swanson, those are exterior?
Yep, I know that.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Proof of parking usually is exterior because to try to add interior at a later date is not.
Right. And if, if you ran the parking regulations based on that PSR zoning, it's the exterior spaces that they were short.
Right.
So this would, would be in compliance for that zoning district.
And so there's room for the size of parking stalls that they're recommending to add 29 that would, if we needed to bring it up to PSR, but that would not be something we would, in a proof of parking, we request they do at the time of the build. We hold that in abeyance should parking not be sufficient on-site.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. Thank you, Director Teague. And Mr. Jensen, I think you probably heard me earlier when I said you could have 15 minutes and manage your time accordingly. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor of City Council. My name's Jay Jensen. I'm with the Waters Senior Living, 1600 Hopkins Crossroads in Minnetonka. Thank you for taking the time to help us work through this project. We strongly believe it will be an asset to the entire Edina community, and we're in front of you, as, as staff and, and your city attorney have pointed out, for two reasons. One is we really are committed to try to create some affordable housing, and we're trying to do it through shrinking the building. So that's our first request to shrink the building, as, as Carrie has described, as well as the preliminary and final plat. The, in creating the affordable housing, we're creating the seven units and taking out the 28 feet in the middle and the underground parking below the memory support. As you saw from the photos, you really can't tell the difference very much, although we are shrinking the building 14 feet on each end, for a total of 28 feet, all of it coming out of the middle, and the remaining common areas are still more square footage than we have in Eden Prairie. On the parking impact, we still exceed the current zoning by 70%. Our experience at the Colony, if you were to go there today or tomorrow, you would find that there's, of the 142 units there, 20 residence rent spaces underground. And in the wintertime, there are more boats than there are resident cars. So from a practical standpoint, you need about, for, for this sized project, somewhere between 50 and 60 spaces. We're not asking for any, you know, reduction in parking. I'm just saying, we will be, with our existing requirements, have more parking than we'll need. And that, taking into account the average age is mid-80s. At Eden Prairie, right now, the average age is 87. The other thing is that creation of affordable housing isn't just supported by us and Colonial Church. Some of you have received letters of support from other Edina churches. Normandale Community Church, Our Lady of Grace, Christ Presbyterian Church, and Edina Community Lutheran Church have all sent in letters of support to try to help create some affordable housing, to help meet the Met Council goals, and more important than the goals is to help some seniors in Edina who couldn't otherwise afford to live here but for this action. So we, we support the staff recommendation. We appreciate your consideration of this, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Member Sprague?
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions on the, on the Eden Prairie facility. So you've got, I assume, a, a continuum of care there. You have memory care units and...
Yes, we do.
Care suites, and then straight assisted living?
There, there's more assisted living units at Eden Prairie than there are proposed here. There we have 14 memory support units. Here we'd have 28. There we currently have three care suite units. We're going to increase it to six. Here we have 14.
And in your experience, do any of those people have cars?
No, none of them have cars.
Okay, so then let's go to the rest of the population. What's, what's left after that in terms of number of units?
Number of units...
AL.
In Eden Prairie, I gotta do the math in my head. If we take off 142 units minus 17, leaves you 126 or so assisted living units.
And so of those 120-some units, how many are parking?
Twenty.
Okay, 20. So that's 15%, something like that. And do you have other, other locations for your, for this business?
Yes. Well, then let me add one other thing at Eden Prairie. At the end of the building, there's a 25-unit transitional care unit that's technically nursing home beds, and that's for people who are discharged from Fairview South there or Methodist Hospital who need another two or three weeks of intensive therapy before they can go home.
Okay.
So that's an addition to that, at the Eden Prairie location.
And your other locations are?
Minneapolis, we just opened that one. That's 77 units, assisted living, memory support, care suites.
And about...
And it's just filling, so it's right now a third full after a month.
And what's the parking there?
Well, I'm going from memory on that. There's probably about 60 spaces underneath.
Yep.
And the reason it's, it's a little trickier there is across the street is a 200-bed nursing home with 14 spaces on-site. So we're trying to do shared parking between this new 77-unit assisted living and the 200-unit nursing home.
Okay.
And, and the concern there is, is not so much people in nursing home driving, which doesn't happen very often. It's the staffing, because the staffing at a nursing home is much higher than assisted living.
And in the Eden Prairie facility, how many employees roughly at a time?
Not counting the trans care.
Peak?
Peak is probably about 30. If you add the trans care, then you'd probably add another 10.
And average visitors per day is...
Boy, that's...
Is it dozens of people? Is it a few?
Well, the trans care is more because it's like visiting people in the hospital where you have a lot more guests on a continual...
More institutional, so you have more, yeah.
Assisted living varies depending what activities are going on. I, I couldn't hazard a guess.
Okay. The affordable units, so how does that jive with elderly waiver? We did receive some correspondence about, you know, would, would that type of client qualify for the, the amount of these affordable units?
For these seven units, yes, they would. In, the Metropolitan Council's requirements is 50% median income. So a senior with residence, or with incomes below 50% of the median income would count for the seven units. And Eden Prairie, to just draw an analogy, we work with Hennepin County very closely on the elderly waiver program, and it's, like many things today, subject to federal and state changes.
Right.
But, but there are between 25 and 30 elderly waivers in Eden Prairie right now.
25 and 30, okay.
Correct.
And surface parking at Eden Prairie, about how many spots?
About 90, and about 75. There are 75 underneath.
Okay. And do you find that the 90 is maxed out?
No. I think during certain, I mean, during Christmas events and things like that, there are.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Swanson?
You were here to hear my discussion with Director Teague about a proof of parking. Have you ever been asked at any of your other facilities to agree to something like that?
No.
Have you had a chance to see his map of what it would, where he could put them if we asked you to accept a proof of parking?
Yes.
Would you be comfortable accepting a proof of parking for us?
Even though we exceed it by 70%?
I know, I know.
In, in the spirit of being a good neighbor, we would accept it.
Thank you.
Member Swanson, just on that point, you can landscape within that spot?
Yes.
As, okay, that's acceptable.
Oh, yeah. You built, yep.
And that's, I, we had a meeting, if I might, with our architects and civil engineers in anticipation of this to, to tweak it a little bit, so in the event we ever needed to do proof of parking, there wouldn't be anything that would structurally impair us from doing that.
Thank you. That's my only question.
All right, thank you. Member Brindle?
I just, I just have a quick comment. I mean, we've been around this thing, watching the planning commission. We've been around this thing a number of times, and I'm not going to revisit the issues or argue them. They are what they are. I will just tell you that this facility, as I said when, when we voted on this the last time, this facility is needed, and more like it are needed. My mother-in-law no longer lives in Edina because there is not a continuum here that she can move into, that provides independent living, and then within the facility provides what she needs for graduated care as her life moves on. And she's 91. She still drives. She's with it, and she wishes she could still be here. So I look, you know, I, we do. We absolutely need this. And, and we, we voted on it once. We'll vote on it again, but I, I appreciate your patience. And I, I know there are opinions on all sides of this, but I do look forward to it. Thank you.
I want to know where your mother-in-law drives at age 98, and what time of the day?
Yeah, well, when she...
Yeah, well, when she asks me for a route, I do not send her on the interstate. I don't send her on the highway.
Okay, thank you. Member Bennett.
She's near my neighborhood. Yes, Mr. Jensen, some follow-up questions. Speaking about Eden Prairie, there are some similarities and some differences between the facilities, slightly larger in Eden Prairie. I also note that the units are actually smaller in Eden Prairie than they will be at this proposed facility. The one-bedroom units appear in Eden Prairie to start at 530 feet, and the largest two-bedroom unit is 1,145, and that corresponds with a size range at the proposed facility of 800 square feet for the smallest one-bedroom and 1,500 square feet for the largest two-bedroom. Is that correct?
I think that, Mayor, council member, I think that 500, and I'm doing this from memory, I think there's two 533-foot studios, and the rest of them are about between 100 and 200 feet smaller than the Edina one, on average. And the reason for that is, one of the things we're doing here that we've heard is seniors like to have their in-unit storage in their unit rather than in the garage. So at, in Eden Prairie, the storage, excess storage, you know, the Christmas stuff and all the things that are only used seasonally, goes down in a storage bin, which is very common in apartments in a separate location. Here, we're bringing in, you know, between 8 by 10 and 10 by 12, very large closets in each unit, which makes the units appear larger, although a good chunk of that is the storage.
Sure. I actually took a tour of the Colony back in January a year ago, and I have their home pri, their schedule. So it appears that the studios are 415 to 428 square feet, the one-bedrooms 530 to 816 square feet. So when the one-bedrooms at the Waters will start at 800, that is significant, and, and what, go to, I think, 1,200 square feet? That's a significant size difference. It sounds like you're attributing at least some of it to storage. One bedroom plus den, 947 to 979 square feet, and again, that very large, two bedrooms ranging from 822 to 1,145 square feet, but almost a 400-square-foot difference in the largest two bedrooms with the ones at the Waters proposed to be 1,500 square feet. Is that correct?
Well, I, I don't have all the numbers in front of me. I will just say that the Edina project, on average, the units are maybe 10% larger, but a good chunk of the increase is maybe a third to a half of it, depending on the unit design, is that in unit storage.
Sure. Okay, a couple of other similarities or differences. The Colony at Eden Prairie is located on bus lines, is that not correct?
Correct.
So someone who is, for instance, arriving to work, a staff member, can take the bus to and from work.
Some do.
Yes, but they have the ability to.
Yes.
Also, in terms of location, there's a shopping center across, is it Prairie Center Drive?
Yes.
Other facilities in the area, library, et cetera?
The, we, what we do with Hennepin County Library is, we have the residents figure out what books they want, and we have staff go over, get the books, and bring it back to the library inside the building.
So almost a bookmobile approach.
So the rest seniors don't go over to the library themselves.
Sure. And then because there was a lot of confusion on this point in the discussion with the Planning Commission, I'd like the record, just to be clear on this, is it correct that you will be registering this facility under Minnesota statutes 144D, which is Housing with Services?
We have, we license it with the Department of Health, and there's also registration with the Department of Health. But every building is licensed.
Yes, I spent quite a bit of time looking at this in the last 24 hours, so if we could just have some clarity again for the record, the facility itself will be registered, not licensed, with the State Department of Health.
To open every single facility, we need a license from the Department of Health, and it also has to be registered. If you don't have, if you don't have both of those, you can't open.
Well, this is what I found when I looked at the statutes. I found that there are two that govern the type of housing that we've been talking about. 144A governs nursing homes, 144D governs housing with services. And the process with 144A as a licensing, it does require that there be an administrator who is licensed, a nursing administrator, and it requires a review of architectural plans. From the state statutes, it's a much more streamlined process for the registration of housing with services under 144D. Also, 20% of the residents can be under age 25, and there's, of course, no requirement that somebody need medical care. And again, what I'm trying to establish is a clear record. I'm not trying to challenge you or argue with you, it's just that there was a lot of back and forth at the Planning Commission, and it really wasn't left clear at the end. I do understand that your, the services that you provide are licensed under 144A, and I believe that's a Class F, as in Frank, license?
Mm-hmm.
But otherwise, the facility itself is registered as Housing with Services under 144D. Is that correct?
No. If, if we cannot, or just to be absolutely clear, we cannot open an assisted living anywhere in Minnesota, and we've done this many times, without a license and a registration. And they go through the property in detail, and we've just went through that this year in Minneapolis.
Just so I have my records then correct, can you tell me where that license is mentioned in state statutes since I easily found 144A?
I'm going by the practical, I'm working with the Minnesota Department of Health and Hennepin County.
Member Bennett, I'm looking in the...
It's 144A.4605.
Right. And then 144DO2, and comply with the requirements of 144DO1 to 06 for the registration, which is in Mr. Knutson's memo.
Okay, if you'll give me just a second, I have...
144A.4605, Minstat requires that the Class F providers be licensed by the Minnesota Department of Health.
Yes, the Class F providers. Again, that's, that was, that was the clarity that I was seeking and thought about and found.
I mean, we are licensed as a company in the state, they register the building, we're also licensed, so we need both of those, and our company also needs to be reviewed by the Minnesota Department of Health.
Yes, and again, what I'm trying to do is have clarity for the record in terms of what's a license, what's registration, who's licensed or what's licensed, what's registered, and the facility itself is registered, the care services are what is licensed, if I understand the state statutes correctly.
But I'm speaking from a practical standpoint, I'm not an attorney, so when we open a facility, we need both of those to open a facility.
Sure. Let's back up a little bit. If you were licensing under 144A, have you, have you been administrator or a developer of a nursing home in the past? Are you familiar with those requirements at all?
Yes. Well, I'm not familiar, not, not by numbers, but by how we've done it.
If you were licensing under 144A, you would be required to seek a license for a maximum number of residents or beds, is that correct?
For a nursing home?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. For a 144D Housing with Services facility, are you required to register by number of residents or beds?
That, I, I don't know specifically, I can't answer that.
The statute does not contain any reference to that.
I know we fill out a lot of forms for the Minnesota Department of Health, and I can't remember offhand if one of those, we give them the full design of the building, so I think, I'm sure they look at how many units you have and what your staffing plan is, but whether there's a specific line item, I, I can't answer that.
And actually, one of the pieces of correspondence that was received by the Planning Commission is a June 2010 revision of Regulation of Health and Human Services Facilities in the State of Minnesota. And what that says, in facility, type of facility by type of facility, it discusses what is available in the state of Minnesota, and for nursing homes, we know the number of licensed beds in Minnesota. For Housing with Services, the number of beds is not available. So it is, in fact, not a part of the, of the registration process. And where that becomes significant is with this question that we had earlier with respective number of residents. How did you arrive at the number of 169?
Mr. Mayor, council member, what we did is, we took the number of units, counted the number of bedrooms. And typically, we have not seen people double up in a single bed, or we've not seen three people in a two-bedroom. It's not very common at all.
I did notice, as I was reading the state statutes last night, that in fact, we have state statute that you cannot, a nursing home cannot prohibit, or state law cannot prohibit the use of double beds in nursing homes, leading me to think that at some point people prevailed upon the legislature to understand the importance of married couples remaining together, some of them still choosing to sleep in the same bed. So again, that number of 169 is something that you took from the number of bedrooms in all the units total.
Correct.
Okay. What do you intend to do in the operation of this facility to restrict the number of residents to 169?
Mayor, council member, by, unfortunately, if you look, and I'm going to go to the Colony again, because it's, it's something you've toured and you've seen, most of the people who are there, overwhelming, and I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I would say it's probably pretty safe to say that 80% of the residents are women. And it's just due to life expectancy, the average age of 87, you know, women live longer. And I think if, if you look demographically, if I went through and, and counted everybody in Eden Prairie for the 142 units, I would bet that there aren't more than one person, if I added up all the bedrooms, I would be confident we're below that number and have been since it opened 10 years ago. Just from a manner of speaking, because on one hand, we're trying, earlier you talked about us having very large units, and we're really trying to have a very nice facility and incorporate a little bit of affordable housing in it. So we don't want to jam it full of people if we're trying to have a very, very nice facility for seniors to live in. So we're going to be very sensitive to, you know, really trying to work with seniors and not renting out a one-bedroom apartment to four people.
Sure, but to back up again, you, is there a measure that you intend to use to make sure that in 139 units, understanding that 42 of them will be memory care and care suites, but in those 97 one- and two-bedroom units, you will have a restriction on the number of occupants? Or I, I just don't get how, what guarantee there is of 169?
Mayor, council member, there really is no guarantee.
Okay.
Mayor?
It's based on experience.
Mr. Knutson.
Since your site plan assumes certain things for parking, as you've been discussing, you could, in the site plan, reflect that by saying you can't have more than X number of occupants, because if you have more than that, then you will violate your parking requirements. So you could put that in the site plan if you chose to.
I also, I also am taking note of Member Swanson's suggestion of proof of parking, and at this point, I'm done with number of residents. One of the other questions that was raised, I understand that your goal is to have some affordable units, and some of the correspondence that's been sent to us and some of the testimony before the Planning Commission dealt with that issue. It's my understanding, after reading what was sent to us, that elderly waivers will cover services, but they will not cover the portion of the monthly cost that is rent or food-related? So can you tell me, please, how these seven units will be affordable, even with elderly waivers?
Mayor, council member, there's another program called Group Residential Housing that provides approximately $875 a month for just the housing portion, and the elderly waiver provides the service portion. When you add those together, you get the numbers that we talked about earlier this year.
And who makes that other program, Group Residential?
It's through a combination of Hennepin County and the state of Minnesota, and that's what we use in Eden Prairie, a combination. Every single unit at Eden Prairie has both of those programs running together.
And then what happens with the balance of the housing portion above that 800-some dollars per month?
That's, we, we, that's all we charge.
Okay, thank you.
We make up the difference.
Okay. We also heard, those of us who were able to see the Planning Commission discussion, heard quite a bit of information about water table and flood plain, and I noted your responses carefully. Do I understand correctly that with a 100-year event, the parking lot could be under, up to 15 spaces in the exterior lot, could be under one-half to one foot of water? I understand that you think it's one-half, and people connected with the watershed district think, or hydrologists think it'll be up to a foot, but is my understanding of that correct?
Mayor, council member, it isn't the watershed district staff, it's the neighbors' expert thinks it's a foot. The watershed district staff agrees with the analysis that we've put together with them, that it ranges from a peak of a foot at the very far corner to probably down to three inches.
And how many of those exterior parking spaces will be?
15.
Okay. Is there any risk or threat of water also accumulating near the door, the entrance to your enclosed parking?
Yes, there is. And in the event of the 100-year event, we would actually have all our staff park in Eden Prairie and bus them in.
What about your residents and your visitors in the, in the event of a 100-year event?
We still have more parking than is required. If you take away the parking, what we believe, if we take away all the staff parking, and it's just current residents and visitors, we still believe we have enough parking to cover that 100-year event.
But specifically with respect, so understanding that that's your plan or assumptions with respect to the exterior spaces, the interior enclosed spaces, if there is water against that door, how are people going to come and go from that garage?
They won't be.
Do you have a written plan to, to address stormwater issues?
Internally, we've talked about it, we've got a written plan for our administrator, a little memo written up for the 100-year event.
I note from the, I note, again, in the correspondence, that since health and safety would be more the city's concern than the watershed's concern, that it is advisable that the city have such a plan filed with it, and I just want that, again, to be in the record. It seemed like a reasonable suggestion, given the, what we're seeing with climate events.
Mayor, council member, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Member Brindle, anything else?
No.
All right. There was an issue that Member Bennett raised in another matter with regard to resurfacing a parking lot, and I'm wondering, is Mr. Anderson, you, you are the church representative?
Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanted to clear something up. I'm looking at the staff report, and I think the church demurred on helping with the resurfacing of the lot, but when I look at the history of that east lot, those 99 units, apparently the east lot was owned by Colonial Church but was dedicated to the city of Edina when the church was built back in 1978. So you gave that property to the city of Edina for the parking lot.
That is correct.
And then the agreement was that you entered into a parking lot agreement that would allow the church to use the lot for your parking requirements, when you needed it.
That is correct.
As consideration for giving them that property for a city lot. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. That's all I have for the questioning. Any other questions for the proponent? I'm going to open the matter for a public hearing, and folks can come forward. If you have overheads, we'll use the center podium, and then we'll give you a handheld microphone. Otherwise, use the side podiums, and give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes, you'll see the yellow light, you've got 30 seconds, and please make sure, we had our city attorney define the issues at the beginning for a reason, and I'd like to have you confine your comments to the issues that are before the council, which is proposed site plan approval and proposed plat, plat approval, both preliminary and final. Thank you.
I'm Susan Clark, and I live at 5812 West 61st Street in Edina. I'm speaking in opposition to the Waters project and their request for preliminary and final flat subdivision approval and their change request application. I expected to be able to speak as long as I wanted, because I was representing the neighborhood group, but I'll keep my remarks to three minutes. This, the, on May 10, 2011, as you recognize, Waters came to you and said, "We want to reduce by 39 spaces, and we want to reduce common space by 28 square feet to self-fund seven affordable housing units." I'd like to point out that this $30 million project has been materially misclassified in the zoning process. It's classified as a PRD-5 facility, a convalescent nursing home, and that requires a valid license from the state of Minnesota. We don't think it's going to be able to get a valid license, because the state of Minnesota has a moratorium, and it, they have said it would be registered housing, that is assisted living with services. Well, why, why is it PRD-5? Well, parking could be a real serious concern. So I've done an analysis of the spaces there, and as I've pointed out, just giving, I mean, giving them latitude... giving, I mean, giving them latitude.
Mrs. Clark, we're going to give you a handheld microphone there.
Giving them latitude, um, here, it looks like there could be more than a hundred and sixty-nine residents, and that's very much a source of concern for us. The Edina Health Department defines that, um, there has to be, um, a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty square feet, and then, um, there must be a hundred separate square feet for each resident, and the number of occupants cannot be based on the number of bedrooms. So, as you see, it's, it can be larger. Um, Mr. Jensen reported that in two thousand and ten, the, um, that it had exceeded parking requirements for PRD-five by forty percent with the thirty-nine spaces, and he's asking to have them taken away. We think that that's unfair and unreasonable. The Shelter Corporation said that, um, that a hundred and sixty-nine people will live at the Waters, but twenty-eight percent of them can be under fifty-five, so thirty-three of them could be under fifty-five. The city was informed that, um, twenty percent of the people in the colony are still working, and we're wondering how they're going to get to work if they can't drive. Senior requirements require five points, five car stalls, and then non-seniors require more stalls per, um, apartment unit, so maybe it should be a mix of that. We feel that the zoning misclassification, classification has legal risks for the city and Edina residents as to the building use and the required parking.
Mrs. Clark, I'm going to have to have you wrap up here.
Okay.
All the time.
Um, until this can, the proper zoning classification can be applied, we'd ask that you vote no on the plat subdivision and the development application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak, uh, in opposition or in favor of this matter? Mr. Gravel, if I recall correctly?
Your honor.
You want that handheld microphone, Mr. Gravel? Oh, you, okay, there you go.
This is, uh, eight-ten-point-one-one. It's an ordinance which Arlene Forrest-
Your name and address, you better give us your form.
I'm sorry, your name. Fifty-six-oh-nine Tracy Avenue, Kent Gravel. This is eight-ten-point-one-one, which Commissioner Forrest cited as her reason for voting against the preliminary plat, and it states, "The com, the council, in determining whether to approve or disapprove of any plat or subdivision, may consider, among other matters, the following: A, the impact of the proposed plat or subdivision and proposed development on the character and symmetry of the neighborhood." And she actually mentioned in her, uh, comments that she didn't feel like it fit with the character and symmetry of the countryside neighborhood. Uh, A two, the compatibility of the size, shape, location, and arrangement of the lots in the proposed plat or subdivision with proposed density and intended use of the site and the density and use of lots in the neighborhood. Again, this is the only high-density, uh, building in the area, whether north of sixty-two or south of sixty-two. Uh, eight-ten-point-eleven G, the relationship of lots in the proposed plat or subdivision to existing streets and the adequacy and safety of ingress to and egress from such lots. Recently, I, I almost never take sixty-two to come home on Tracy. I usually take Vernon, um, but the other day I took sixty-two, nine o'clock at night, coming home, very dangerous trying to make a left onto Tracy from the sixty-two off-ramp. So, I still believe that it's very, uh, unsafe to have more people coming, making a right from Colonial Way towards the sixty-two off-ramp, uh, cause even more difficulty. Uh, eight-ten-point-eleven B, susceptibility of the site to flooding. This is a new issue since the last time we were before you. We hired a hydrologist. He, uh, has opined that there could be a foot of flooding. I know there was some issue with the, um, developer regarding this at the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. To lay any doubt, um, to si, to rest, uh, HGA, which is the proponents' architect, stated that the low, this, this was sent to the city of Edina, "The low points in the parking lot are at elevation eight-fifty-five. This is twelve inches below the one-hundred-year flood elevation." It also states Colonial Way immediately west of the site is at least two feet below the one-hundred-year flood elevation. A hy, hydrologist said we're in a wet period. Um, he's currently in Moorhead, working with the Red River flooding, and he's concerned that, um, the one-hundred-year flood elevations are going to have to change. And finally, the last issue at eight-ten-eleven is whether there's an eighteen percent grade or more, and, uh, I believe it is more if you walk from the parking lot up the hill. Thank you very much, I hope you vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gravel.
My name is Mary Ann Meyer. I live at fifty-eight-oh-five Jeff Place. I've lived there twenty-four years, and my backyard will look out at this facility. Um, real quick, in, um, response to Kent, if you check the last three months, there have been three major accidents. Tonight, an hour before I came here, three major accidents getting off of sixty-two on the overpass. One, right after school was out or right before school was out, one involved a school bus, an SUV that flipped over and another car. Tonight, a Porsche and a truck were involved in an accident, and about a month ago, in the same spot was another rollover. So, you can check on that. That's three accidents in roughly less than three months. Um, in regards to the col, uh, colony, I was there in April, visiting an elderly friend who had a hip replacement, and she was in rehab. I went twice. It was miserable trying to find a parking space, and this was in the middle of the day. I worked a couple hours over at Country, or Creek Valley Elementary School, so this was shortly after my one-thirty getting off of work. I went over there, and it was miserable at one-thirty at April, in April, to find a spot both times. What happens if there is not enough parking after all? How will the city handle this? This is, there is no other land to build extra parking. There, will the residential neighborhood have to be concerned about the parking ramp? A parking ramp is unavailable to facilities zoned R-one, including Colonial Church. This will push more parking into surrounding neighborhood streets. There's already an issue based upon the surrounding neigh, uh, based upon the surrounding neighborhood streets and the information previously provided. This is a significant impact on the residential neighborhoods and an impact on the quality of our lives. I use Bretison on a daily basis. I live there because Bretison is a peaceful, safe place to go, and it's already, we, it's overcrowded with the, the people now, new neighbors coming in with all the foreclosures and, and, um, short sales and so on and so forth. So, it's already become an issue with parking in the parking lots and along the side streets. This is not fair, and it's not reasonable, and I say, we need to say no to this. And, um, in response to, uh, Councilmember, um, Brendel Mary, um, my dad passed away a year or two ago. I'm from New York. We went out there to find him a facility, a, a nursing home convalescent. He was ninety-one. He drove, he was capable of doing all of his own things. We just needed to get him out and get him in a, in a situation, in a community where he could keep his mind active and his body going, and every place we looked at, in Staten Island, New York, and New Jersey, were wonderful, but they were in commercial areas. They were not in residential areas. We have commercial areas for this, these kinds of projects. This is not the place for it. I'm not against it, it's not, I, uh, we need this. I'm going to be there myself one day, but not in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Meyer.
John St. Pierre, six-zero-zero-five Arbor Lane, Mayor, City Council. In regard to the agenda item, I'd like to raise a minor procedural issue with the Planning Commission City Council meetings. Subsequent to taking public comments, the commission and the council discuss among themselves regarding the issues, and occasionally comments are made that warrant a response from the attendees. Specifically, I'm referring to a comment made by the Planning Commission during the review of the amended site plan, stating that previously, one of the primary issues about the proposed building was the size, and since it is now smaller, it should be more acceptable. Removing fourteen feet from both ends is not a significant change, and even the developer stated that is not noticeable on the drawings. The real issue is the reduced parking. Requested with the amendment to the site plan, removing the thirty-seventh's parking stalls, the following are reasons not to reduce the parking requirements. There's already existing overflow parking problems during church events. Existing church parking is being reduced through the loss of the south parking lot, exacerbating the existing problems. Decisions on the zoning selection has allowed a lower parking requirements in similar projects constructed in Edina. The, uh, parking that we were talking about with the one tenant per bedroom, uh, but there's no exclusion anywhere that requires them or restricts them to the one per bedroom. The proposed parking does not consider events such as holiday parties, et cetera, that are organized regularly by this type of facility. The developer assured us at the Planning Commission that events would be coordinated with the church to assure that there is no event at the church and that the church parking would be available for these events, but that is a promise made for individuals not even employed yet and even, and could very well be wishful thinking. The building change has done nothing to reduce the parking needs. There are no fewer units, there are no need for fewer employees. There is means to add, there is no means to add, or limited means, to add parking in the future. The site is now landlocked. The, uh, diagrams we had showing additional parking, I'd question whether those revised parking laid out would comply with the watershed district, numerous watershed problems on this site with the, uh, with the retainage of water. Numerous assumptions have been made regarding the amount of parking required, many of which have been questioned during public comments. If any of these assumptions are not correct, it will not be the developer or the church that will be dealing with these problems, it will be the neighbors. Thank you.
St. Pierre, thank you. And, and also, just, uh, good to see you moving around, and it was from the Planning Commission, that, uh, one of your neighbors-
Well, I just came off some of the cardiac meds today, and so, my heart rate's not controlled by the meds again, so the adrenaline's kind of pumping it up on me.
Yeah.
Thanks for the concern.
We'll keep an eye on you. All right, thank you. Ms. Kersner?
Dorothy Kersner, fifty-eight-twenty-eight Jeff Place, Edina. I'm reading a memo written to Mayor Hublin and Councilmembers by Gordon Johnson, who couldn't be here tonight, so we want it to be on the record. This memorandum is a supplement to the materials that I submitted to the city of Edina's Planning Commission on July thirteenth, two thousand and eleven. I continue to be opposed to the development proposed by the Water Senior Living of Edina for the Colonial Church site, because in my opinion, the development does not comply with the provisions of Ordinance eight-five-zero-point-one-three subdivision two D, which states rest homes, convalescent homes, and nursing homes. By their own admission at numerous meetings, the Water Senior Living representatives have described their proposal as a registered assisted living facility with a memory unit and some services. A facility that is registered with the state of Minnesota is not a facility that requires itself to be licensed by the state. This facility appears to fall under the definition provided in Minnesota Statute's section one-four-four-D, point zero-one subdivision four, which is entitled Housing With Services Establishment. Under paragraph A, housing with services means, one, establishment providing sleeping accommodations to one or more adult residents, at least eighty percent of which are fifty-five years of age or older, and offering or providing for a fee one or more regularly scheduled health-related services. In paragraph B, it clearly states that a housing-for-services establishment does not include, one, a nursing home licensed under chapter one-forty-four-A, a hospital, certified boarding care home, or supervised living facility licensed under sections one-forty-four-point-five to one-forty-four-point-five-six, and other types of facilities not applicable here. Ordinance eight-fifty-point-one-three subdivision two D is inclusive in that it is limited to rest homes, convalescent homes, and nursing homes, all of which are licensed under either the above referenced Minnesota statutes, sections one-forty-four-A or one-forty-four-point-five-oh at all. As stated herein, the Water Senior Living is not a licensed facility and does not come within the intended meaning of the city's ordinance. Unfortunately, the city of Edina has not maintained its ordinances in a modern and updated fashion. Ordinance eight-fifty-point-zero-three subdivision three does not contain a definition of an assisted living or a housing-for-services facility. It contains only an outdated definition of a convalescent home, which is at best a predecessor to the current terminology for a boarding care home as described in the Minnesota statutes. The city's definition describes a convalescent home as, quote, "A building or group of buildings licensed by the Minnesota Department of Public Welfare for the care of children, the aged, or infirm, or a place of rest and care for those suffering physical or mental disorders." Unquote. Subdivision two states in part that, quote, "Any use not specifically allowed by this section in a district as a principal, accessory, or conditional use shall not be allowed or permitted in that district by implication, interpretation, or other construction or..."
Mrs. Kersner, I need to, I need to have you stop. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so the developer's proposals, and the only amendment for the original plan was approved in two thousand and ten. Basically, um, to make it a, a level playing field for the citizens of the city, um, please do not approve the subdivision for-
Thank you.
Sure.
Yep.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I don't suppose I get to make my own remarks?
Yeah.
I'm doing.
Thank you, Ms. Kersner.
David Henry, fifty-seven-twelve Creek Valley Road. Outside of my prepared comments, I noticed on the, uh, proof of parking exhibit that was prepared by staff, there are nine stalls immediately adjacent to the main entry of the project. It is my belief that when other commercial projects present this type of design to staff, staff denies that request because of the safety issues associated with cars backing and maneuvering into the main entry drive. I, I encourage you to vote no to the preliminary and final plat and site plan approval tonight. The density intensity of this project extends far beyond its boundary. Currently, the developer is not required to make any significant infrastructure corrections or improvements in exchange for the very significant change in use, the change in zoning, and the change from our general comprehensive plan. The project is one better suited for areas of mixed use with greater density and intensity of activity. Public transit is not going to serve these residents as the two buses a day, and, and employees. The two buses a day are early in the morning, late at night, and out on the weekend. Traffic problems are an issue that remains unmitigated and becomes more problematic with the addition of four-hundred-and-twenty-five vehicles per day. That's in the study that's on file with the city. The study has critical flaws. Uh, obvious, the most obvious flaw is the scope of the study. It only includes three minor intersections, and the three intersections, I mean, hardly intersections, it's Olinger and Colonial Way, it's Olinger and Tracy, and Olinger, or Tracy and Colonial Way. It does not include the obvious points of egress and ingress from the neighborhood. It doesn't include any of the east or west ramps for sixty-two. It doesn't include the signalized intersection at Tracy and Vernon, and it does not include the signalized intersection at Vernon and Olinger. Their testimony tonight is that, uh, there was a crash at the, uh, at this location. I passed by it on my way home. If these intersections were included, there would have been various mitigation measures suggested by the study, and, and council and staff would have included those appropriately in the conditions of approval for the project. The study has not been updated to reflect the potential impact of the developer's request to reduce the common areas of this building. Now, you keep hearing twenty-eight feet. That's twenty-eight feet by the width of the building, by the number of floors. That's thousands of square feet. At this point, what's being, I, we heard some of the things that are being reduced, but what if stock rooms are being made smaller? Trash and recycling rooms are smaller, staging areas are smaller, service areas are smaller. Now, you've increased the number of visits required to service the same number of residents, increasing traffic, but the study, again, wasn't updated to show that. What happens if- What happens if offices now that we're going to be in the facility are located off staff? These employees now have to travel more frequently between the site and their office. Remember, don't go out next week and try to reassess the traffic. Wait until school starts, and you'll get a much fuller understanding of the real depth of the traffic problems in this area. The community supports thoughtful integrated development of this property with single-family homes, triplexes, duplexes, or even townhomes, not a multi-story commercial business that has no real permanent restrictions on how it's operated.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Mrs. Hogenson?
Well, do you want to use our time together, is that okay? Or do you want one person reading three minutes, the other person...
When you say you want to use your time together, do you mean you...
Six minutes.
Three and three?
Yeah, but I didn't know if I could just re, I don't know how you, we can be official here. Do you want me...
Can I give her my three?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, I suppose, but I just assumed to have you stick with three and three.
Okay, we can stick with three.
We can, we can do it, okay. Here, you start. Okay, my name's Barbara Hogenson, fifty-eight, twenty-nine, Jeff Place. After all this time and effort, the countryside residents that receive public notice regarding the Waters Project are left nothing with nothing but questions. We respectfully ask you to provide answers to us and all residents of Edina, so we can understand the purpose of the state of Minnesota requiring notice to be given to residents of potential projects they may, that may impact them, and what is the process we can count on in these quasi-judicial public hearings today and in the future. Our questions are, how are residents that receive notice supposed to best weigh in when they receive a subdivision change notice or any public notice? If it, if it's an automatic process, then why would the city take our time and incur the expense to send out this notice? When residents receive this notice, in this case of about three hundred of us, how are responses to be considered by the city staff and council? What are the objective criteria that the city staff and council use to determine projects requiring public notice? At what point in the evaluation process is residents' input being considered by the city staff, developer, and city council? How much weight does the city staff and council give to the residents that receive public notice? How much should be given? If this is, in this case, when you have the majority of people that receive public notice weigh in and show evidence and support that the subdivision and zoning doesn't make sense per the letter of the city ordinances, how does that get evaluated? What is the governing law that residents should be able to count on when they receive public notice? The state of Minnesota says the city ordinance should be the governing law. When an amendment to a comp plan is proposed to residents that receive public notice for the good of the city, and then why is the city only asking some three hundred residents to weigh in when roughly one million dollars was spent on city comp plan only two years prior, which involved the entire city? And how can residents be expected to thoughtfully and constructively participate in only ten days? Help us understand when the Colony in Eden Prairie is a licensed nursing home by the state of Minnesota, and since two thousand and seven has said no more nursing homes because they feel they are already enough, then why is the city of Edina allowed to zone the Waters as a nursing home when it is assisted living with services facility, class F, known as provider of home care services without skilled care, like would be available for a true licensed nursing home facility? Does the zoning of this project make sense? Is this zoning in violation of state law? Is the zoning objectively determined in a fair and reasonable manner for all stakeholders, including residents? What truly is the Waters facility, and how should it be zoned, keeping in line with the integrity of the city ordinance? Is my time up? Yep, yellow, okay. Do you feel that the Waters is a convalescent nursing home or rest home when twenty-five percent of the residents can be under fifty-five? There is no enforceable way to restrict the units to one sixty-nine, one hundred and sixty-nine people based upon the zoning code, along with a very large living quarters that people over fifty-five can be independent, living and working?
Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Christine Henninger, and I live at fifty-eight, sixteen, Jeff Place. The Waters Project says that FHA financing requires it to rent only to seniors. What if the Waters doesn't make it? Are you aware that this project can then be used for individuals other than seniors, and there is no enforceable way for the city to do anything to the contrary with the PRD-five zoning? A well-intended verbal commitment from the developer is not enforceable. Is it fair and reasonable to have city zoning for PRD-five say one thing, and have the zoning be provided to a project for something that it is not? Is it fair and reasonable to have a project zoned for something which it is not, and have city staff perform analysis on traffic, parking, impact on neighborhood, park safety, and impact to property values? Is this really providing an accurate analysis for the building's true use and requirements? What kind of risk is the city opening up the neighborhood to who receive public notice? Who is accountable and liable if there are problems? Can we be assured that the developer will be accountable and liable for any impacts, and that the residents will not have assessments for extra traffic, infrastructure, park safety issues, parking ramps, et cetera? We hope that you see that errors have been made, and numerous risks are being put upon our residential neighborhood. We ask you to keep in mind that this is the only assisted living with services that has two football fields in length, fifty-five feet high, in an exclusively residential neighborhood in our city. It's not a nursing home. It should not be zoned as if it is. It should be zoned for what it is, and staff work should be done accordingly. Remember, the city sent us, the neighbors, notices as required by the Minnesota law. We took these notices very seriously and worked literally hundreds of hours to understand the risks and the facts and present this to all of you. Based upon the errors and the risks that we feel we've identified, you've put residents in an awkward position to be associated with this project that's going to, that could have potentially very significant negative impacts due to its scale and its location. I know we are on record that we don't support the enormity of this project in this area, and we understand this is the responsibility of the city and the developer, and we look to you to take that responsibility and liability for it as well. We respectfully ask you to vote no to the subdivision and no to the change request. We would also appreciate answers to these questions, so people in our city can decide how and to what extent they want to be involved in these type of public hearings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henninger. Ms. Johnson?
Jan Johnson, fifty-eight, thirty-seven, Jeff Place. I would just like to speak from personal experience. I'm a licensed registered dietitian. I've consulted in assisted living for forty years, plus or minus, and I've been in many, many facilities. I'd like to think and have you know that many of these buildings have very large groups of people coming in. There are special events, parties, and so forth. I've been at many of them, and I've had problems parking in many of the facilities. So when we think of the parking and also the church, I've been at many funerals at Colonial Church, parking is overflowing, they were overflowing in our neighborhood. So then we talk about the park, the baseball, the games. So when we think about the special events at the facility, we think about large funerals, weddings, and so forth at the church, and we think about all the things going on at the park. What's going to happen to our neighborhood? Only one thing, it's going to overflow into our neighborhood. So please think of this on your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Move the second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, yes. Sure.
I have a couple of questions that were brought up by residents. Mr. Teague, currently in our comp plan, could you verify what density we have on this particular piece of property?
Certainly. This is now guided high-density residential, that means density of anything over twelve units.
Okay. And PRD-five, that was the other question. The issue is, what happens if, when we give it this zoning, if they're not successful after they've built the piece of property? Can they just move anyone, families, or anything in that they want?
They could not. They would have to still operate under that, that same use, would have to be licensed through the state, so a different operator could come in, but they couldn't just turn it into market-rate housing or any other type of use that doesn't fit that specific category. They would have to come in and potentially get a rezoning for that, for that change in use.
Those two questions came up. Mr. Jensen, I have a question for you that I forgot to ask you when you came up before. You gave us a palette of colors and materials at a previous meeting that you were going to use for this building, and I forgot to ask you if that material's board and those colors still hold.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, yes.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Member Brindle, any questions for staff, or the proponent, or any dual points?
I have a question.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Director Teague, understanding that it could not, the building as zoned, could not be used for market-rate housing, however, it could be used as zoned for another facility that was not engaged in the care of the elderly. Is that correct?
If it fits within that definition of convalescent home, that, that would be correct. I don't have that definition right in front of me, so...
I have my code book, but I understand that there's some disconnect between what our code says and what state law says, and, and based on the handout that we received from a resident, or actually that the Planning Commission received from a resident, that June two thousand and ten Regulation of Health and Human Services Facilities, there are actually a number of types of facilities in the state of Minnesota. They include nursing homes, certified boarding care homes, non-certified boarding care homes, supervised living facilities, group homes, housing with services establishments, such as that we've been discussing, board and lodging facilities with special services, board and lodging facilities, and adult foster care homes. All of those would be facilities that in some way, shape, or form would be licensed or registered with the state of Minnesota.
Correct.
So one of, so it, again, the facility could be used under the current zoning as one of those types.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? I've got a couple. Mr. Jensen, there's a concern that twenty percent of the people in that facility under that zoning could be under age fifty-five. Is it, what's the, what's the demographic profile of your, of your proposed tenant?
Mayor, councilmembers, our profile, we anticipate the average age to be in the mid-eighties. Very few people will be under seventy. We don't anticipate anybody under fifty-five.
See if everything else for you. There was a concern by Mr. Henry that there'd been no update on the, on the traffic study, and no one had looked at the potential traffic impacts caused by the reduced size of the building. What are your thoughts on that concern of Mr. Henry's?
Mayor, councilmember, the areas that we reduced are truly common areas. We did not change one square foot of storage areas or staging areas for food or delivery or any of that. Delivery area wasn't touched. So in that regard, it's, it's exactly the same. It's just the twenty-eight feet was right out of the middle in a hundred percent common areas.
And...
And the tra, from a traffic study standpoint, the building, my traffics, and I'm not a traffic engineer at all, but from a traffic standpoint, it's identical to the way it was previously described.
All right. I think you might have covered this in your initial presentation, but there is a concern about the parking, and I know that you're, by ordinance, overparked by seventy percent, but nonetheless, that concern remains. Did you describe really, or the percent of time that, that say, just the surface lots at your other facilities that you own are, are occupied or used during, let's say, during the daylight hours?
No, and it would be...
No, you didn't comment on that earlier?
No, I didn't comment on, and I don't know...
Would you comment on that now?
My comment would be, I would imagine it varies greatly, also the location of the parking. For instance, at the Colony of Eden Prairie, the end towards the transitional care where there's a lot more visitors is full far more frequently than the other end, which is really for assisted living visitors.
All right.
So I think it would, it would vary quite a bit.
And, and what were the number of folks that you projected working at the facility in any particular work cycle?
The peak time, mayor, councilmembers, a peak time at this facility would be about thirty employees.
And those were factored into your traffic, or into your needs for parking?
Correct, into our parking needs with, with city staff.
Okay. I think that's what I had for you. For the city attorney, Ms. Kersner read a letter from Mr. Gordon Johnson, and I know also that the Planning Commission, several residents argued that, or raised the concern that the proposed project doesn't meet the definition of a convalescent home because it wouldn't be licensed, and I'm wondering if you could comment on that section eight-fifty-oh-three subdivision-three of the code, and how it interrelate, or interfaces with the particular zoning designation.
Mayor, members of the council, first, just so we're clear, the council's previously decided it does meet the definition because you've already approved that initial site plan.
Right. I understand that the zoning is a non-issue, but I think still it's worth giving you...
But as to the convalescent home definition... Let me grab it here. First, as I noted, that the names of the departments have been changed, and I don't think that's an insignificant change, and we follow the new name. But looking at it, the totality of the definition, which I think a court would do, and construing it liberally as a court would do towards the property owner, I would think it would cover assisted living. And I would also note that this does, will be licensed. Class F licenses have been discussed before, and registered.
A follow-up, Rogers, excuse me, mayor, and why would they interpret it liberally for the proponent?
Mayor, members of the council, zoning laws are restriction on the use of property. And the court, in an important decision many years ago, and has been followed ever since, have held that because it's a restriction on the use of property, zoning ordinances are interpreted strictly against regulation and for what the property owner wants to do. If there's any doubt, the property owner wins.
And the rationale is that the, the government could write it clear if they wanted it to apply differently?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's get a clarification too on that proposed park dedication fee. We've seen two conflicting numbers, six ninety-five, I think it was six ninety-one at one point in time. What is the park dedication fee?
Six ninety-five. I'm not sure if I've seen the six ninety-one. It's five thousand dollars per unit.
Then I just misheard you earlier tonight, that's my fault.
Okay. All right. And, Mr. Jensen, and let's cover that issue. The six ninety-five, as I recall, was something that, when you were here before, you had agreed to and...
Yes, we continue to agree to that.
Yeah, okay. All right. And I think that's all the questions I had. Member Swenson? Member...
I'll send in a question.
Before that, let me just ask Mr. Jensen a couple of questions. So in the Eden Prairie facility, maximum employees are thirty at a time. Even if your surface lot is filled up, you're only using twenty of the seventy-five underground, so it, it can function in a way as overflow, not that you've had the need, but it could. Is that, as I understand it, because you have lots of capacity underneath still?
From a practical standpoint, a number of employees do park underground.
Because you, and you still have excess capacity?
Still have excess capacity.
Okay. And I'm curious, I know the zoning issue's moot, but are we the only, the only municipality you've dealt with that does not have assisted living land use defined?
Mayor, councilmember, I don't know. We didn't go through this when we had to rezone Minneapolis, but I can't remember the zoning classification there off the top of my head. Everyone's different.
Thanks.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Just again, to have clarity in the record, Mayor Hovland asked about those residents under age fifty-five. I understand that you think it's not likely, however, legally, you do have the right to have up to twenty percent of the residents be under age fifty-five, is that correct?
Mayor, councilmember, if we go with FHA two-thirty-two financing, it's virtually, and I can't remember that, if we're required to say they're all above fifty-five, I think from my memory, I think that... my memory, I think that's the requirement.
So the terms of your financing are different from state law because state law enables you to have one category of registration that allows you to have up to 20% under age 55, and you can even exceed that 20% if you register under a different provision of state law, or there's an exception to that restriction. So again, just want a clarity on that.
Mayor, council member, I think there's the law and there's the practicality. From a practical standpoint, you can go to any of our assisted living facilities and if you add all 20-some of them around Minnesota together, you wouldn't get five people under 55.
Well, a couple of pieces of anecdotal information from, again, my visit to the colony is it was your staff, I identified myself and said that I was on a field trip, but I was told that 20% of the residents there still work. I don't know what kind of occupations. And I also was told that about roughly 20% or so, or 25% of the residents did not receive services beyond the two meals a day that are part of the package, the rental package. So it sounds like an older population, but it also sounds like a very healthy population at this point. And I heard you explain more to the Planning Commission about how people aged at different rates. And in fact, you can have an average age of 87, but people can fall into three different groups in terms of their health and activity level. Tonight, you spoke more briefly, and perhaps you didn't have time to get to that explanation. But understanding that gave me some context for understanding what I was told in Eden Prairie. I would anticipate that you'll have some variation also among potential residents here. And then a last anecdotal observation, and that was on 2:00 PM on a Monday afternoon, we could not find, we, we could find a space in the surface lot because we finally found a space and were able to go in and take a tour. But we were at both ends of the parking lot. We were at the assisted living end of the parking lot, right at the entrance to the underground garage, and around at the end for transitional care. And it was an almost full lot at 2:00 PM on a Monday afternoon.
This last Monday?
January, a year, a year ago.
Oh, January, okay.
This prompted one other question that I had that I had written down and failed to ask you before. Talk to us a little bit about how market forces deal with the issue of the level of occupancy. There's been a discussion that you are a concern about you being able to put a lot more people in here than, than, than just 139 in 139 rooms that you, as you say, it might go up to 169. Other people are concerned about it going over 200. What, how does the market deal with this particular facet of our population? And what, in other words, what do they demand for facilities? And what do you anticipate here in terms of level of occupancy?
Uh, Mayor, council members, we're designing and operating this building as the best facility that we're going to develop in our whole system. So we're looking at, this is why the units are larger, that's why the finishes are nicer, and we will focus, and that's why the rents are a little bit higher. And, and when people pay that amount of rents and they, and they want to live in a certain community, a senior community, they expect a certain level of services. And as you pointed out, the market forces are going to have us manage it in such a way so that it, it does not become overcrowded, you know, that, that there are people there who, who need these services that an assisted living community would provide them. So we think that this will be, this, this senior housing will be a step above what you see at the Colony at Eden Prairie, and will, and that's why we encourage people to go and look and, and see what people are there, and how they live, and how it's operated. And this will be a small step above that.
All right. Thank you. Other questions for the proponent or the staff? Member Swenson?
I would move that we approve Resolution 2011-74 with two added conditions. One, a 29-style proof of parking. That would be condition number four. And condition number five would be that the colors, materials, and design are what were presented tonight for the design and colors and materials at our previous meeting.
All right. Is there a second? All right, discussion?
Can I have a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Um, we talked earlier about a 100-year flood, flood event management plan. Could we include that as well? I know that there's some concern about that, and that would, if we had the plan, it would be addressed specifically, so.
I would accept that. Would you accept that?
That's fine.
That would be number six.
Very good. Discussion?
You may also want to consider something with respect to the 99-space parking lot because if that's being resurfaced at a cost of about $70,000 plus this summer, you may want to restrict construction, vehicles using that space. And I don't know if you intend to have any kind of cross-parking with the facility, but if so, you may want to stipulate that it requires that a new contract be entered into or a specific contract to that. Two suggestions.
I'll let Kerry handle that in his management for construction. We have a $695,000 park dedication fee that I know that John Capriels has tentatively committed to working on the redo for this plan already for their parks, so.
All right. Discussion? Any further discussion? Comments?
I just, I just have one comment, and that is that the last time we voted on this in February of 2010, I voted against it. And I voted against it not because this isn't a good idea, but I voted against it because of what Ms. Meyer said earlier, and that's, that's location. And, and I, I do agree with what she was talking about. I do understand that if this vote fails tonight, that the building will be built. That was, was previously approved. And if this, if this motion passes tonight, then it will be built in the modified manner that we have in front of us. But I do want you to know that, that I, I look for it to be successful, and at the same time, I, I look for more of these in commercial areas where there are lots of things to do around that building that support the economics of the building as well as support the people in the building.
Other comments? Member Sprague?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I, I was not on the council when this originally came forward. My, my concern from the start was the process of engaging the neighborhood. And I had some long discussions with residents about this. This, this is mentioned in the questions list that Mrs. Hogenson dropped out. When amendment to comp plan is proposed, why is the city only asking 300 residents to weigh in when roughly one million was spent on a comp plan two years ago that involved the whole city? And so on. And I, I wish we could have come up with an alternative process, something like a small area plan. I, I think that the proponent wishes that as well. I don't think I'm alone in saying that, that we could have had a more engaging process, but that's history now. From the start, I never had a problem with the use. This is a residential use in a residential area. And I, clearly, there's need for assisted living. It shows up in the most recent city survey, people talking about their perception of whether we have too, too few or too little of certain amenities. And assisted living for seniors and nursing homes are listed as perceived as too few or too little. So, you know, we have a direction from the comp plan to provide lifecycle housing and to preserve our neighborhoods. And I think this project does, does this by the location. It's ensconced in the corner. I drove by the site many times, thinking about tonight, looking at it, and I, I don't know how you could find a more secure, ensconced location than where it is in the corner. So I, I disagree on the location aspect. My, my concern that I spoke with residents about from the beginning was mass, scale, and density. And because of their, because of their comments and their campaigns and their, their many hours, the hundreds of hours someone referenced of, of input, the size of the building came down from four to three, four stories to three stories, and the number of units came down as well. And I, I think that was, for me, that was a welcome change. So when I saw this come forward, I was, I know it's only 28 feet, but even if it were one foot, I would support reducing the size of the building and the scale based on my earlier position. The parking comes out of the definition of the use. And unfortunately, and we're not alone in this, we do not have a defined land use for assisted living facilities. So we're dealing with all these hangover questions and issues that comes from having to put it in a, a non-specific section. I don't believe it was, it was, I, I understand how they chose this section, the convalescent home, nursing home section. I've researched, and other communities have chosen that as an intermediate category before they go through their code, update it, and come up with a clear, definite section for dealing with assisted living facilities. So I understand it. My, my hope is, you know, in the near future, that our Planning Commission will take this up and come up with a land use category that fits and is more appropriately parked. I don't, I don't think this, I don't think this needs, I don't think we want to overpark assisted living as a use. And that same rationale would apply here. I don't want to overpark this facility. And at the same token, I don't want to underpark and exacerbate a, a, a parking situation that predates this facility and that's going to exist whether this facility is built or not in terms of around the park. So same for the transportation issue related to this application. There's, there are existing traffic issues, specifically the on, the off ramp or the entry to the ramps on 62 and Tracy, very dangerous intersection. With or without this facility, someone needs to address it in, in the near future, and I hope we can do that as a city. So I believe that the approach that you have taken is a balanced approach. It will secure the parking situation. I, I don't believe they're going to need to use it, but better to be safe than sorry, again, given the situation in the neighborhood. And I hope that once this is over, that this facility is, is successful and will meet the needs of residents for this type of housing because it's, it's out there and, and it's a, a, a good, a good addition to our city to offer this type of housing.
Thank you. Member Swenson, any comment?
No.
All right. Oh, thank you, Member Sprague. I'm going to support this matter this evening with respect to some of the issues that were raised. I took a look at the Sunrise facility down on France Avenue, compared it to the proposed Waters facility, particularly with respect to parking spaces per resident. And the reason I did that is, you know, that's on a former church site, this is on a church site, budding a single-family neighborhood. And I was concerned about the, concerned that the residents had about parking. And so I, I've been down there quite a bit for openings and, and to look at the facility for my brother-in-law and other things. And there's never anybody there. I mean, there's, you could park anywhere you wanted. The staff's behind the building, but the parking lot is basically empty. And when I looked at the parking spaces per resident at Sunrise, it's .59 per resident, parking spaces per resident. And down at Waters, without the proof of parking, it'll be .91 parking spaces per resident. I also looked at things like the distance to the nearest home. On, on Sunrise, it's 254 feet. Here, it's 420 feet. And it's over on Tracy, and I don't think we've ever had anybody here from Tracy that's expressed a concern about it. And from Jeff Place, it's 3,000 feet by my calculations. So in terms of the concern about the density in the project, I, I think the market's going to take care of that. If you all recall, we had every competitor of this facility in town here for round one that, that didn't want to see us approve it. And they're all concerned about it being a state-of-the-art facility. I think the market will dictate the occupancy level, and I think it'll be, there won't be an excessive number of people here. It'll be, I would, I would think a lot of the two-bedroom units would be rented by a single person just so they can accommodate guests that will come. So the 100-year event, I hope that doesn't happen in Edina, and especially not over there. We've talked about that. I guess especially not the rest of the city. So I really like the idea that we can create seven affordable units. I think you all had a sense that I would have supported TIF use here for a social purpose, not to help the developer, but for a social purpose, to be able to help people that otherwise couldn't afford to live in a beautiful facility like this, spend the last part of their life, uh, living in a, in a very elegant way, for what I heard Mr. Jensen say would be $875 a month. And I think shrinking this up is consistent with what neighbors wanted in the first place. And it gives us all the affordability that we wanted to see, maybe not as much, but some. And I commend the developer for working hard on this affordable aspect because I, I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for folks in Edina that couldn't otherwise afford to live here to be able to, to have the, the last, the last period of their life at this beautiful facility. So I intend to vote in favor of it. Any other comment? Member Bennett?
I could not support this last year and have heard and read nothing that causes me to change my evaluation of it. I too support the provision of affordable housing in a community that has different names, workforce housing. And one of my big frustrations in the last couple of years is we do have code that covers affordable senior housing. We're not using it. We're using, or we're using it for projects that aren't designed to provide what the code was intended to do. We've now gutted the small-size restriction, which slashes at the livability that was part of that code. The maximum restriction still remains. There have been some variances obtained, and that is to guarantee the affordability. And in return for building a project of that type, a developer gets to build more greater density and less parking. So we have a model. It's just that we're not using it. There are two projects in town that exist well within that code, and one of them exists in the southwest quadrant and one of them in the northwest quadrant. And so as a community, we have seen that they can be successful. We also had a process where one of my colleagues now has referred to, wish we put about a process, a small-area process. Well, we had a process. It was the comprehensive plan process. And we did spend a lot of money, between $500,000 and a million, bringing in consultants, looking at things like traffic, wastewater, the way our roadways worked, what we wanted for a land use plan for our city going forward. And that resulted in a plan that did meet with that council approval. It, it's a good plan. It identified some areas of potential change throughout the city and promised that before big changes were made in these areas from what exists in those areas today, there would be public process and the development of a small-area plan. This area was not listed as one of the areas of potential change. So the community had an opportunity. The church people who supported development of this area in this way had the opportunity to come forward during those couple of years, that the community was engaged in discussion about revision of the comprehensive plan. They did not. Finally, we also have, we now have some code revision that would cover this, without code that specifically covers assisted living, and that's PUD, Planned Urban District or Planned Urban Development. It was referenced by Commissioner Forrest during the Planning Commission discussion, and one of the limitations of it is you can't use it in a single-family home area. You can't use it in an R1 area. Otherwise, it's usable throughout the city. And it allows the city to customize some of the regulations with respect to a development so that some of the things like parking can be addressed in a more specific way. Finally, considering that PUD would be a possibility, except it's, I guess now that the area's rezoned, it could be a possibility, which was again, part of Commissioner Forrest's comments, leads me back to this emphasis or the, my understanding that you have to look at the total surroundings. Because the plat has lapsed, we are back to looking at that list of, of considerations, guidelines, and criteria that Mr. Gervell referred to in his testimony. And when I look at them, and I look at the, the total area, and I look at the lack of amenities like a library, shopping, anything that people can walk to, anything that they can get to other than a vehicle, I look at the lack of transit. I look at the fact that everybody who works at this facility has to arrive in a car because, in some kind of vehicle, because there is not public transit that serves this area. There is a reason why previous facilities have been located where they've been located, and part of is what they can offer their residents in those locations. And so for all of those reasons, I cannot support either of the requests that are before us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second in front of us. Do we need a roll call? I don't think we do. Simple majority. I thought of roll call. This is regarding the proposed Resolution two thousand eleven dash seventy-four, which should approve the amendment to the site plan for the Waters Senior Living in Edina at sixty-two-hundred Colonial Way. All those in favor of adopting a resolution with the additional conditions imposed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Carried. Next matter is the Resolution two thousand eleven dash seventy-five, which would approve a preliminary and final plat. Is there a motion?
No.
Sir, a second. It's been moved in second if we adopt Resolution two thousand eleven dash seventy-five, approving a preliminary and final plat for sixty-two-hundred Colonial Way. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Carried. Thank you.
Mayor, just briefly, I would love to engage, before people leave, I just want to say, I would like to engage the residents in the discussion on these, on these issues, because there's more that needs to be done, both with the code and with the process in the future. So Barbara's not here, but I'll get in contact with them and try to arrange some kind of meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that anything we can do to improve processes is something that we're, we as a council are always interested in. So thanks for raising that. All right. Next matter on the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience that wishes to raise an issue with the council? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next portion of the issue.
You got one?
Oh, yeah, welcome.
I'm in the council. I'm Rick Murphy from Grandview Tyrenado. I'm here, actually, merely to request or seek a special assessment on our, on our property at fifty-four fifteen West Seventieth Street, the Grandview Tyrenado facility, previously built approximately two years ago now. We're seeking solar power for the facility on the building, and I'm here to, you know, promote or support the PACE project, or the Pacer financing project that's supposed to be, you know, voted in, or I believe a part of the sixteenth council meeting. I'm requesting, I'd like to ask for a special assessment to be approved ahead of time. I do have a, you know, contract in order also with the solar-powered company in the area to, to, to advance the project, essentially to get it, get it rolling.
Mr. Murphy, would this be, did you say a project under that PACE program?
Yes, we're seeking financing through the PACE program, which has to be approved by the council, which I believe is a-
And what's, what's the required timing for the council to act on, on that? Have you had, have you had discussions, have you had discussions with any of our staff yet?
Not me personally, no.
Anyone from your organization?
With Murphy Automotive, no.
Yeah, with Murphy Automotive?
No.
Okay, so this is the first time you've, you've been to City Hall to-
Correct.
Talk to anybody about us engaging in, in the PACE program?
Mayor, members of the council, I've discussed this just this week with your finance director, John Wallen. There is an amendment to, a couple of statutory amendments in two thousand ten that allow you to do this, but it's not an overnight thing to do. You would have to set up a program, and there are a lot of features to that program, and you have to arrange, it can, it is legally possible, but it's not something you can do overnight or quickly, and there's a question, you'd have to decide whether you want to pursue such a program.
Essentially, the program allows the city to finance and energy, qualifying energy conservation, improvements to private property through the four-twenty-nine special assessment program. So we're, we're, we know how to do four-twenty-nine assessments, and we've done them for many years here. This is a twist on that concept.
You know, as I recall, one of the senators that worked on the passage of this PACE program was former Senator John Doll from Bloomington, D-O-L-L. I think he is now working. Did you have any contact with a guy named John Doll?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think that he is very familiar with this, with the processes that need, that we need to go through, and maybe we don't need his advice, maybe we can do it, at least evaluate it on our own and see if it's something we want to engage in. But my recollection is that he's acting as a, as a consultant to municipal organizations on this, on this program that has a strong environmental aspect to it. Member, Member Bynum? Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand that what's being asked for here is that the city would finance this? No?
No.
What does it mean?
Well, that is essentially what it means, is that we finance the improvements, and then we, we agree to a special assessment schedule with the property owner, and then they pay us back on an annual basis.
There are very, there are various variations on that, if you will, and one of the variations that's been discussed is that the property owner finds their own financing. Then they come to the city and say, "Here's what it's going to cost," and to get a better rate and to get financing. We agreed to assess the property, and if we collect the assessments, we pay them back to the person who's given them the money. That is one way of doing it.
Essentially, there's, there's no financial responsibility on the city's behalf, as all you're proving essentially is a-
It's conduit financing.
Third-party financing.
Member Swenson?
I don't think we're going to solve this, but could I just suggest that Mr. Murphy talk to our city manager and see where we are on it?
Sir, our, our proposal was to bring the item to the council, the program item to the council on August sixteenth. I think the issue was that they wanted to get it going earlier, and-
Yes, it, the program is extremely favored by those, you know, everybody that we've spoken with, with the program so far, and those that are familiar with it. However, you know, we would like to move forward with the project prior to this, the meeting on the sixteenth, which, you know, really, you know, may not merit.
I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the program's probably pretty cool, but if we're a city and we're going to do some due diligence on, it is best if we work with our, our manager and other people involved in our government to bring it fully forward so that we knows all, know all the pros and cons of it and which way we want to take it before we make an ad hoc decision at a request at public comment. So it's not that we don't think that what you want to do is great, and we understand you have this timeline, but you're going to have to wait, at least if it were my choice.
Yeah, I think we, we really need an education, in my case, a re-education. I think it was, it's fallen into the lost knowledge bin in my brain, so I need to get refreshed on it as well, and the rest of the council needs to understand that. But I do remember having a general impression that it was a very good program, and I think it's something we'll want to look at, but I don't think we can do anything tonight that would allow you to proceed before we learn more about it on the sixteenth.
Does management feel comfortable with bringing more information for-
No, that was, has been our plan, and I think we've shared that plan with the folks that are interested in the program, including the EEC.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate the consideration.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Yes, sir. Good evening.
My name is Lynn Hinkle. I'm a Minneapolis resident. I'm also the policy director for the Minnesota Solar Energy Industry Association, and I worked with Senator Doll to draft and secure passage of the PACE legislation in the twenty-ten legislative session, and really excited about what's happening in Edina, in particular the support that's been given, the Edina Commercial and Industrial PACE resolution by the Energy and Environment Commission. And to that end, I've already spoken to Mr. Wellen and Jesse Strove, and stand ready to sit down with any number of people from staff or council to discuss exactly what the city attorney is talking about, that actually is not a financial liability for the city uses established special assessment mechanisms that are available through Minnesota statute. So I'm happy to continue to provide information and background so that we could facilitate at the earliest possible time the consideration and support for something that I think would really move Edina forward and set it in a leadership position among many of the cities, which it already is, as a green step city in Minnesota. So thanks for your time, and I look forward to engaging council and staff in developing this proposal and support for the Energy and Environment Commission's resolution for PACE.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Do, do our staff, folks, have your contact information?
Yes, they do, and I'm happy to, after this meeting, contact people independently as well as council. It's, it's a great opportunity, and I think it's typical of the kind of leadership that we've seen of Edina in the past and going forward, that it's received as much support as it has up to this point, and we anticipate the same kind of engagement going forward with staff and council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Anyone else on community comment? Yes, sir.
Mike Chapron, reside at fifty-eight twenty-nine Tingdale Avenue. I've been a long time Edina resident and small business owner in the community as well, and I would just like to express my support for the PACE program. Edina has always been at the forefront and known for its success, its planning, its smart growth and development, and, you know, basically, a program like PACE would not only support the local economy with jobs, but also improve property values. As many of you, I'm sure, are aware, Edina has been affected by the downturn in the housing market, less so than, than other cities, and so I believe there's still a lot of good equity that the homeowners within the city have.
Yeah, we're having a hearing on PACE.
Again, I'd just like to express my support and would encourage you all to, to do some research on the PACE program, if you have time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. If, if we have a, an array of folks that are going to support the PACE program, I think we've, we've kind of covered that issue pretty well. Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name is Bill Silas. I live at forty-six twenty Casco Avenue. I've been here for twenty-eight years. While I do support the PACE program, I'm not here to talk about that. I was just going to make a few comments, because I am also, as you see, VP of Sales and Marketing for Ten K Solar, and it was much more toward the terms of the recommendation made by the Environmental and Energy Committee, that I would encourage you to, to table for the time while you look at all the opportunities that you may have. As I sat in on the earlier Energy and Environment Committee meeting-
Mr. Simon, I'm going to interrupt you, because if you, I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, but in community comment, you're not allowed to speak on an issue that's otherwise on the agenda this evening. You may have also missed the city manager's recommendation at the very outset of the meeting that we tabled this matter. We're going to discuss it in a couple of items.
And in those cases, then, I stand corrected, so if you're going to table it, I'd encourage you to do so, just from the standpoint so you can evaluate some other alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to move to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter is Resolution two thousand eleven dash seventy-six, Resolution Accepting Donations. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second's on the first.
All right, thank you. It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution two thousand eleven dash seventy-six, Accepting Donations, on behalf of the City of Edina. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center and the Braemar Golf Memorial Fund, and those donors' names will be listed on the website in the next week or so.
Mayor, I would just like you to recognize a large donation to the Edina Arts Center from Northmark, and say thank you for that.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. All right. Next matter is the eight-B, which is the Public Facility Inventory and Feasibility Study of an Indoor Athletic Facility.
Thank you, Your Honor. This proposal is being made to the council as a, as a confirmation of the discussion that the council had with the, on the sports dome issue. We tried our, our best to capture what the council's discussion was that night, including the discussion earlier, that you had earlier tonight on the public facilities inventory. But this is what we, we believe you asked for. If you adopt this, we will begin implementing the, the action items immediately.
All right. Member Swenson?
When we were correcting the minutes earlier of that meeting two weeks ago, I heard a number of people talking about this study of facilities and maybe helping us decide if there are facilities that are not well-used, et cetera, and that we should try to ship those to a different use or not use them. Is that your understanding of what you're studying? Because originally, when we were first talking about this, we were talking about building a dome. And if we're just studying whether we have enough fields, et cetera, for our athletic space, and we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars, and that's all we're going to get out of it, I, I would have trouble supporting this. If it's a study to look at how we use our facilities and how much they cost and who uses them and what we get out of them that are athletic, I could support that. But I know what our playing field time is. We've, I've, we studied it a dozen, eleven years ago, when we were going to go out for referendum for athletic facilities. So if, I need to know exactly what you're studying here to be able to support or not support this.
And within that universe of items that you mentioned you could support, I take it you could also support the park board conducting a feasibility study relative to a potential indoor athletic facility, and a cost attendant with that would be included in that twenty thousand dollar number?
That's the intent of the motion.
But are you telling me that to study whether you should put a dome here or not alone is twenty thousand dollars?
No.
Okay. That's really what, if I was confusing in my statement or question, that really gets down to what my question is. Because if for twenty thousand dollars, we're discussing whether we, we need a dome or not, and if we need the field space or not, I can tell you that's a waste of money.
As the proponent of this idea, and I know that Councilmember Frigg joined me, and we've had some correspondence from the community on it, it was always my intention that it have a broader view. For, we are in an ideal position in terms of having data. At the same time, we now have the quality of life survey-
I told you I was okay with the broader view, but I don't see the broader view specifically spelled out in this feasibility study. All I see is talking about a sports dome and things like that. So my question was, what is this covering?
Sure, and it would be my hope. It would be my, my whole, my intention.
I want more than a hope.
It would be my plan, my plan, my intention in proposing it.
I'm not good on the twenty thousand dollar hope.
We, we control the action taken, so we better define the scope of the work if we think it's appropriate.
I'm reading the first paragraph, and it says, "Direct staff to prepare an inventory of the City of Edina's public facilities, semicolon, authorize a project budget of twenty thousand, semicolon, and authorize the park board to establish committees." So to me, the twenty thousand relates to what preceded it.
Including a feasibility study of an indoor athletic facility?
Sure, I would almost put the feasibility study not in the first phrase, but after the, the inventory or study. I mean, again, drawing together, we don't have to repeat the quality of life survey. We've got it. We now have census data, courtesy of the federal government. We have budget data. We know about our, our enterprises, and in fact, one of the comments in the last park board, or minutes, I guess, from May that really caught my eye, is a question from a park board member to Director Caprios, "What happens when the trust fund for Centennial Lakes and Edinburgh is gone? Does that mean that four to five hundred thousand dollars a year in unmet capital deeds then moves into the city budget?" And the answer was, it does. So I think it's timely. It's really timely for us to do something like this.
I get that, but in this, and in the information, the background, we don't talk about Edinburgh, we don't talk about Centennial Lakes, we don't talk about any of those facilities, and this was predicated on a sports dome that talks about fields. So I just need it defined better.
What I would suggest is that when, when we drafted this motion, the idea of establishing a project budget was to encompass the entire project, which included both the preparation of a- of an inventory and also the evaluation of the sports dome concept, whatever that might mean to the park board, including whether there's a needs assessment that's part of that, and a financial evaluation of it as well.
So the, you see a cost associated with the feasibility study being on the financial feasibility?
I would, I would think that that would, that's important information for you all to consider.
It would require an independent analysis.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And our goal is not to spend $20,000. Our goal is to bring you the information you need at the lowest cost possible.
I know that Ed McCold, in response to Member Brindle's inquiry, had provided some good information, and that's something that can be tapped right away that could go into the study.
But I would also point out, in terms of talking about the scope, the point raised by Councilmember Bennett is that we, I don't anticipate an inventory encompassing and going quite as deep as what happens when the Edinburgh trust fund is out and what are the costs of that coming into the budget. That's an important question, but I don't anticipate that being answered through the inventory selection. I think what's happening with the, what I would anticipate being answered by an inventory is, how many, how many facilities do we have? How many square feet do we have? And when were they built? And that kind of, kind of raw inventory data.
Capital needs users.
Yeah, yeah, and we may have that on hand. It may just take a couple of hours with staff we already have to put that together.
Edinburgh is already being looked at separately.
It is. Yep, separately.
So then, again, that can be pulled in. I think it was my, it was my hope that, again, looking at things in a data-driven way, all that information would be pulled together, including the inventory. And one piece that might not be as easily obtained is, for instance, the question of a publicly accessible pool. There is a pool at Edinburgh. Are there other, if that pool did not exist, what other public pools would exist in the community and during what hours are they available? I know Councilmember Swenson swims at Southview Pool, Southview Middle School. I don't know how many hours a day that is actually available for public use, and I think that would be important information to have as part of a facilities inventory.
You know, I think we need to be really careful, and I'm a stickler on being specific to what we're talking about, because if we bring Edinburgh and the inventory of what pools are used for what into this discussion, that's not germane to a dome, and that's not germane to this, this, that what we're talking about right here, it's confusing. It would be confusing if I was a resident trying to figure out what on earth are they talking about? So I want to be sure that we're clear that what we're discussing has nothing to do with the trust fund. It has nothing to do with Edinburgh and Centennial Lakes. It has everything to do with the topic that has been busily filling our email inboxes with comments about an excitement about a sports dome. There have been a few people who are concerned about it and many people who are quite excited and quite in favor of it. I just want to be sure that what we are doing here in appropriating $20,000 for a feasibility study that would include looking at site, looking at use, and, and then, semicolon, under the guise, guidance of the park board, semicolon, "Direct staff to prepare an inventory of the City of Edina's public facilities." That information, I think, is pretty readily available. I would be surprised if we're going to spend too much money getting that information. I mean, what do you think? I, I think that's pretty readily available.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think it's very germane to discuss the global analysis of how we're using all the facilities, which we're talking about adding a new need. So let's first look at how these facilities are being used. We might decide some are underutilized, and we want to move that, the function being done there into another location, and then that, instead of spending money on something new, we might be able to consolidate or move something around. The gymnasium, I'm sorry, the indoor athletic facilities come up as a need, so has a community center, and this ties into the grand review process as well. So we can have a global discussion about all of our needs, all of our current facilities, and how those currently match up, and do we envision any, any different uses of those facilities and/or consolidation in the future.
So what we're...
That's what I understood you two to be concerned about.
What we're inventorying, then, are those things that could take place in a dome? We're not inventorying things that wouldn't take place in here.
No, no, no. They're inventorying everything in town that we have at the facilities, is what I understood. And I don't think inventory is even the right word, based on what I just heard you say again. I think that's, that's a...
The baseline. An inventory is a baseline. What do you, what do you...
But we know what's there, but we don't know how it's used.
Right.
Yes.
That's why I think inventory is a misleading word, and so if the directive from us needs specificity, let's tell them what we want, because my understanding was, in our other meeting, our work session, that what I just heard the two of you articulate was what we wanted to do relative to our existing facilities.
Yep.
And we wanted to take a look at whether or not it made any sense to think about having an indoor athletic facility in our town and all of the attendant issues there that are described in this report and recommendation.
That's what this is intended to accomplish.
Yeah. And then if it's going to cost $20,000, why, what's, what for? I mean, what's the basis for the request for $20,000?
A comparable study of the feasibility of a sports dome in Savage was about $12,000. That didn't include the inventory element of it.
So you would anticipate that the park board, following our directive, may decide to hire a consultant, and this gives them the ability to hire a consultant?
Potentially, right, right. Without, and it has the ability to keep that project moving forward, just as the authorization, kind of preauthorization to them to establish committees does as well.
Remember, Sprague, could you, could you, or Member Bennett, either one, you know, restate, you don't, take out the word inventory and articulate for us again what it is that you want to accomplish here so that we're on the right track? I think we're all with you on it.
We know that people in the community have asked for different things that we don't have. We also know that we have some facilities that are operating very successfully and some that are not, and there is a question of what, can we move things around? Does that free up space for other functions? Can we combine some functions? We know that one of the, that a dome or a sports facility has been cited as an unmet need. There are some in the community who have given more priority to the unmet need of a community center, which so far in the City of Edina is a former high school facility that operates to hold community education classes. I know from an academic space study that the district has conducted, that I heard about in a Community Education Services Board meeting, that the district, because of the rising district enrollment, rising resident enrollment, is going to be needing more and more of the space in the community center for its own needs and functions, and less, less space available for community programming. So we know that there's going to be a push on space that's been used for community programming. We know that we have an identification of unmet needs. We know that we have needs, and so to assess what we have, how well it's working, what's not working, what do we need, what can we afford to pay for, I may not be stating it very artfully, but I am, I think, describing a fairly global or comprehensive list of things that I think to be responsible, responsive to our residents and responsible financially we need to look at.
How about we use the word "analysis" instead of "inventory" of the City of Edina's public facilities, including but not limited to the potential aggregation of uses and assessment of needs? Does that, does that cover?
I don't, we're talking here. I don't think we're unclear on what we want to do, so I don't think the, that verbiage, I don't think we need that specific verbiage. Inventory, to me, covers what we're talking about. It would be an analysis, but we have to inventory the...
I think they've given you sufficient direction.
This doesn't include our wellhouses and liquor stores, and it includes the relevant, I think, relevant public facilities that would be involved in making this decision. I'll give you an example. One of the discussions that staff have had with, with the proponents is over size, you know, the size of the facility. The program, of course, drives, the program is one of the driving forces to how big the facility is, and what drives the program? What else do we have going on in the community that could be or maybe shouldn't be inside a dome? And if size is an issue, that impacts where it could be as well. It enables some locations in the city and it does not enable other locations in the city.
That was well stated.
As for the Savage process, I have read the minutes. Thank you, Councilmember Sprague, and also gone on mine and followed up and seen what they have been doing with their process. If what is proposed at this point is an authorization of a study for the dome, such as was conducted in Savage, I'm less ready to make a decision on that at this point because we don't have the other analysis done yet. To me, that process would follow an analysis where we would decide whether or not, in fact, we can, we, this, it makes sense to pursue, and then the other issues get studied, like possible location, is it ownership, as was described earlier?
I thought these were going to run parallel tracks, and we were going to evaluate every aspect of a potential indoor athletic facility, call it the dome.
I do.
And that, that, what you're proposing is, is a condition of studying other things or some limitation on what we would study relative to a dome. I just think we need to figure out, does it make any sense to build a dome in our town? Is it feasible? And what form of ownership should it have? And, you know, I mean, all the assessments that would go on relative to that, including operational management, finance, location is key. All the issues that are mentioned, all the issues that are mentioned in the memo, I think, are relevant and should be looked at in tandem with the inventory.
I have one more question, and it has to do with, after the last semicolon, "And authorize the park board to establish committees and subcommittees to assist with this task." Do we have to authorize a board or commission to establish a committee?
Only, only because they don't have bylaws and we haven't changed the ordinance yet for...
Okay.
So then you do for the park board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, to make, go ahead.
I hate to complicate, complicated conversations, but one of the things I wanted to be clear that the council understood was, the greater policy issue that's sort of incorporated into this recommendation is, is this, that at the work session, you received a proposal from a group of advocates, from a specific proposal from specific people, and that's not what this is saying. This isn't saying, please go out and analyze Shannon Rusk's proposal. This is saying, take a look at the greater issue and look at the greater issue, and if it's, and then if we decide we're going forward with that, then we decide, is it, do we own it? Do we lease it? And so, so they may come back into the, you know, it was their interest in the project that raised it in our consciousness, but this isn't designed to go out and study a specific person's proposal. So that's...
Right. We're all on the same page there.
Okay.
So I think, as I look at the proposal and the staff report, I think that second paragraph says it well. Upon completion of its feasibility study, the park board will make a recommendation to the city council concerning the advisability of supporting the construction of an indoor athletic facility, and then the final deliverable would be all these other things. So...
Can they make other recommendations also? I would hope that with the information we gained, that there would be other types of analysis that could be made as well.
Relative to the use of other facilities?
Well, relative to, yes, exactly. Relative to the use of other facilities and also relative as to what needs the community is now not needing that could be met, that could be met.
I got to be honest, I want to take on the greater picture myself in a work session, and that was my hope from the beginning, after we get this data on the, on the broader picture, because we have to have some tough conversations about certain facilities, and I have certain ideas. I've talked to other people on the council. They have certain ideas, and we need to hash that out in a session, and so I would see us tackling that end ourselves, and they're taking this piece. This will be enough for them to chew on in the interim, so.
It will. All right. Are you comfortable now with the language, with those sort of attendant oral discussions?
I'm in a different place than everyone else. I'm great with the facility study, looking at all of our facilities. I'm fine building a dome, because I think we have a need. So if you guys got to do it a different way, so be it.
Well, wait a second, though. Even if we decided today we want to build the dome, they would still have to do financial feasibility.
Oh, absolutely.
We'd still have to spend money.
No, I get that.
The money, the money is, still needs to be spent.
I get that.
All right. So we're asking you to do two things here, basically. Conduct a feasibility study of an indoor athletic facility under the guidance of the park board, and further direct staff to prepare an inventory of the City of Edina's public facilities, and authorizing a budget, a project budget not to exceed $20,000 for both purposes, and then the park board is authorized to establish committees and subcommittees to assist with, assist with this task. Does that fairly state what we intend? Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried abstentions?
Sort of.
Got a new category of voting.
A new category of voting.
Halfway between, halfway between an approval and an abstention.
Yeah.
You'll thank us later.
All right. We've got, next matter is HC, Recommendation for Transit for Lovable Communities Bike Boulevard Grant, and Mr. Sullivan, our... Be very capable, Jack Sullivan, up now.
Good evening, Mayor.
Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, yes, this evening I'm going to give an update, an overview of the Transit for Lovable Communities Bike Boulevard Grant. There was some discussion at our work session this evening, but the reason this is also before you is that part of my duties as Assistant City Engineer is to be the staff liaison for the Transportation Commission. And this, this particular item was sent from council down to the Transportation Commission to take a little closer look at. There were some issues that were, were raised. The TLC, the Transit for Lovable Communities folks, came in and gave a presentation to council. They also gave a presentation to Bike Edina Task Force and the Transportation Commission. And through that process, they, they had kind of talked a little bit about some of the commitments that they're asking for the city to, to, to hold true on, somewhat outside of the application that was actually submitted to them. And with that comes some, some dates that they're asking for us to make some decisions and make some movement by, and we had a good discussion there at our, like I said, work session a few, a few hours ago. It kind of flushed out some of the details, but I'll, I'll take a step back and kind of go over the application and what it, what it means and where we stand today, and then, like I said, give the recommendation of what the Transportation Commission believes we should move forward with, and a slightly variation of what staff would, would like to add as contingencies or recommendation of our own. So just take a step back, the Transit for Lovable Communities, we submitted a grant application to them in 2009, which was to install a system of either share-the-road type facility or dedicated bike lanes, starting on the 54th Street over at the Minneapolis and Edina border to connect up with a Minneapolis project that would be further to the east and northeast, traveling west on 54th to Wooddale, down Wooddale to Valley View, Valley View under the crosstown interchange, and taking Valley View down to the 70th Street location down there. We applied for $266,000 in funding, and the application was approved by TLC for $250,000. And with, like I said, with that, it was kind of a combination of some share-of-the-road and some dedicated bike lanes and some other improvements that would help to delineate the bike boulevard and bike nature of this, this corridor. There's three areas that really, from the conversations that have happened with TLC and recently, you were involved with these in previous council meeting, was that there's kind of the parking issue. 54th Street and Wooddale currently allow parking. There's 106 stalls on Wooddale that would be removed with a potential striped bike lane, and that was an issue that was kind of brought up. The bigger... Uh, the bigger issue and the more convincing issue, at least today, um, according to the TLC is the request that they have to, to reduce the three lanes, uh, along this Valley View section down to two lanes. Something that is, um, I guess garnering further discussion both with the Bike Data Task Force, with staff and, um, with the TLC. And the last one is kind of the, the interchange with the crosstown. This is a tough location, uh, there's a lot of traffic volumes here, a lot of turn lanes, a very sweeping, uh, eastbound crosstown to southbound Valley View intersection, um, that poses some potential problems. And so there's a, uh, a lot of issues that potentially can come out of this. We acknowledge that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant approval will not probably solve all of these issues, especially when you get down to crosstown area. But, um, the intent of this two hundred and fifty thousand was to make strides in, in making this, um, this, this whole corridor a reality. And so, uh, like I said, Steve Clark from Transit for Louisville Communities came to the Transportation Commission and, um, gave a presentation and a lot of good discussion happened at that, at that meeting with the ETC. And the ETC, um, basically summarizing a lot of the discussion that evening, supports the efforts to implement the bike lane in Adina. One of the questions that you asked of the ETC was, you know, should we be moving forward with this and how should we move forward? And what's the Adina Transportation Commission's role in this? They also endorsed the three to two lane conversion along that Wooddale, uh, section of roadway. And they also understand the difficulties of the kind of the crosstown interchange down there. Staff, although we, I, I think in theory agree with all the same comments that we would love to see a Bike Boulevard as part of our comprehensive plan, uh, to have both, um, secondary and primary routes and Bike, Bike Boulevards. We recognize that there's a few challenges that we are coming across. The three to two lane conversion, from a staff perspective, is gonna require, um, some additional study. There's some safety aspects that, um, as the engineering department, we feel uncomfortable signing off on without a little further investigation. Uh, the fear that when you remove, uh, the center continuous left turn lane, is you develop the potential for queuing of cars. The queuing of cars then leads a lot of drivers to use the Bike, um, striped Bike lanes as bypass lanes. To either drive our own vehicle or, um, or to, to cut up to an intersection and you make a right turn. Those are safety concerns that we would like to have fully flushed out before that restriping was to take place. And also, um, it may, um, also kind of create a secondary issue where you would, uh, potentially produce some cut through traffic by actually, um, clogging up the Valley View section from a, a vehicle standpoint. Uh, thus kind of encouraging vehicles to use some of the other north-south streets, Kellogg and such, as kind of a route around the area. So like further discussion on that and further implementation. We acknowledge that the removal of the parking along Wooddale and 54th Street is, it, well, is always an issue and it's an issue that's been struggled. We talked about it earlier this evening, how, how do we handle that, uh, from a staff level, from a council level? And we just like to move forward with that. And then acknowledging that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars may not be enough to make all the improvements along the corridor. But, um, TLC, as they've talked with us, as Steve Clark has talked, he's kind of, um, looked at this in three segments. He kind of calls a segment, the 54th Street and Wooddale is segment one. Segment two, he's kind of calling the Valley View conversion and then south of crosstown is kind of segment three. And so, um, we've kind of gained the, uh, knowledge or insight from them that they're willing to, um, allow us to move forward on a, on a, a more metered system or maybe we can get implementing, uh, the phase two now or phase one now and working our way towards these larger loftier goals of the whole entire corridor. So like I said, uh, you know, part of, part of what I'm here tonight to do is to represent the Transportation Commission's recommendation, but also, like you said, to kind of acknowledge some of the staff's recommendation. I'll read you verbatim what the, uh, what the motion was made, uh, the Transportation Commission. They carried a motion to recommit their support to the project and to secure the TLC grant and to endorse the three to two lane conversion on Valley View Road. The reason why this is, I guess, to recommit their support and secure the TLC grant, it's just that we're, um, there's discussion, as we talked about at the previous meeting tonight, that, uh, TLC needs to see some movement from the city. They, they are getting towards the end of the, so to speak, sunset on this and they would really like staff and the council to prove to them that we are, um, we are fully engaged in this and want to, uh, proceed and, and implement a, a project just as much as they do. So that's, uh, the recommendation that I need to bring forward to you tonight. And, um, from your perspective, I think a lot of discussion was kind of flushed out earlier, but, uh, I will certainly answer any questions you have or comments and then open it up to you as to how to proceed, uh, moving forward in this, in this program.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Going back a few slides, uh, it said that the TLC, um, something about the funding, go back one more. Acknowledgement by, no, yep, that two sixty-six may be, not be enough to cover, but Steve Clark also said that they would, they may fund more, they could fund more if it was a more significant project.
Yes, and, and that was, um, he stood up here in front of council and said those exact words to you. I, I would like to think that would be available. I don't know how much more we need and how much more they're able to give. That's something that we can continue to, to work through.
One of the things we talked about that meeting was having, uh, doing a separate project memorandum for the consulting. Another, and related to that, I saw a comment in the, in the ETC minutes included herein, it said, "Discussion ensued, should be working with a firm that has experience with Bike Boulevards." So, if we go forward with this, do you have any companies in mind that have a more specific connection to this type of Bike Boulevard? And are you still intending on doing a separate project memorandum, um, as, as was discussed here on, on the dais?
Yes, Councilmember Sprague and Council, I would still recommend that we would go with the engineering firm of WSB. They have an individual, Ruben, I forget his last name.
Collins.
Collins, that, that actually has extensive, uh, experience with Bike, Bike Boulevards and Bike lanes and biking facilities in general. And that's the reason why I was recommending him to take this project on from, from the beginning.
Well, my only hesitation there is, is when they came back with kind of, I call it the watered down version, the Cheryl version of the Boulevard. I hope that's not the same person working on the next section. Because I, I felt that that last recommendation was a watered down version and that's, to me, is what has jeopardized the funding. So will that be a separate staff person from their company working on this?
It, it would be Ruben that would be leading, leading the, the project. You know, I think, I think that, that it has to go through still the public process and it has to look at this, this, uh, application that we actually, that we had submitted. And keep in mind, too, one thing that I, we didn't talk about at the workshop, work session was, when you refer to the application, we, you know, we referred to it as a study, well, it actually was a, you know, the title of it is a preliminary Bike Boulevard study. So, it, it, the, the route really needs to be studied in further detail. And that might come to where you might have a Cheryl, which they refer to as watered down, but if, but if that gets us through those segments in a safe manner, that's, that's probably not a bad detail to put in or design to, to adopt. But I, but I think that it, it still needs to go through the, the whole process and the design analysis of it in, in greater detail. So far, we've only done a preliminary version of it, kind of at a ten to twenty thousand for the whole.
What you said in your comments, Cheryl's do not increase ridership, this is from the ETC minutes. But Bike lanes do, can have some Cheryl's, but they should not be the majority and that's kind of what you're saying there. We, we may have some Cheryl's. I just don't want it to come back with the same person that did that study previously and come down with a, with a watered down version. So I'm hoping that Ruben can take a different angle at it, that's all I'm saying.
Questions for Mr. Sullivan, further questions? Member Bennett?
I do want to support Member Sprague's comments. I think that that, the, um, last time it was before us, the form in which it was before us and those recommendations were quite disappointing to TLC. And it was a precipice, we were on a precipice at the risk of losing our grant because that, that wasn't what they intended the grant to, to cover at all. Is share the road signage.
Just to extrapolate that a little bit, however, that was a lot of what the application actually that was submitted presented. The three to two lane conversion, that's a great example, Mary, that we recommended is share the road type facility. Um, they're coming back now at a later date and, and demanding a little bit more and, um, we just need to work through those details. And that's where we're, we're trying to work through those. And I think hearing from, uh, Steve Clark and the group, um, since that proposal that came forward from WSB, uh, there's been some clarity put to this issue and I think, uh, a second approach, a second time through on this may be able to get us a little closer to what, uh, what the members here are indicating.
We talked earlier this evening about potentially packing to the MINDOT State Aid Office, um, about changing Valley View from three to two. Would we do that, make that request to them first before we hired someone to do a study, just to know if it's...
Yeah, what we, what staff would propose is that we would go, go forward with that part of the, of the study, which, uh, will probably run us around five to eight thousand dollars to do that portion of the studies.
So we have to do a study and then give it to MINDOT State Aid Office?
That's correct, yep.
We can't just request, will you let us do this and we have to have a study first and then...
We have to present numbers and, and, and a plan to them to react to.
Okay, that makes sense. So there's a cost attached to that.
Yeah, Member Brendel.
I don't like the spot we're in. I'm really embarrassed, after two years, um, this project has been allowed to sit. And I know that I have asked a couple of times, what's the status of this? And, you know, there's a little squirming, but not a lot of answers. And, um, the behavior, I guess, it really comes down to behavior and respect. Here's a quarter of a million dollar grant for improvements in our city and we just let it sit there for two years. And now we're trying to figure out how we're gonna move it forward and, and how are we gonna, in these last hours and days, they gave us till, they extended it till today, we have to decide today. And now we still, we really aren't sure how we're gonna proceed on this. But yet we've had two years to figure this out and to find the right consultant, to find the right plan. So, I mean, do we deserve the quarter of a million dollars? I don't, I don't think we've demonstrated that we've earned it, that we deserve it. Uh, I think that, uh, if TLC takes this quarter of a million and says, hey, there's another city that I know is gonna put this to use and I know they're gonna act on it quickly, they're gonna do what they say they're gonna do, um, I wouldn't blame, I wouldn't blame them at all for taking it forward. So, I, I feel like we're in a tough spot here. And I just had to put that out there because I don't wanna take this lightly. If, if in fact we get this, that's great. But I don't wanna forget the fact that we really mishandled it. And I don't want it to happen again. So I just had to say that.
I understand your frustration, Member Brendel, but I, we gotta stay in the solution and I think we're all on the same page with our dedication to, to biking in the city and I don't want the TLC to get the wrong impression from this meeting that we're not. And for whatever the confusion was or the disagreements over, over, um, the exact nature of the Bike facilities being provided, we're now here, everyone's on the same page and I'm, I'm sure that we can make this happen if we pull together tonight. We had a recommendation from the mayor, um, and from staff that we, we endorse the lane conversion subject to MINDOT approval and an engineering study. And I, I think that's still a feasible alternative. I would also, to show our good faith, I would also, um, move that we, um, have, you know, schedule an open house. Now, I don't know if we're doing 54th and this section, because those will be the most difficult sections to engineer. Or if we would just do, um, Valley View first, because that's the first segment we're, um, we're going after. Mayor, do you have some follow-up on that?
I think, um, with relative to your motion, I think what we talked about upstairs was, uh, conditionally approving the entire route and applying for the Bike Boulevard grant, subject to certain conditions and the conditions that you named. And that, we know there's a study attendant with, uh, sending it over to the State Aid Office, but it would go to the State Aid Office first. And if they, if they say we can do that conversion from three lanes to two on Valley View between Wooddale and the crosstown, then the next thing we would do is what Member Sprague suggested, is have some sort of public process that is acceptable to the council. And it could be an open house, we'd probably follow staff's recommendation on that. But I think it's important that, that TLC know that we, we embraced the whole idea. And that, uh, it's just not, it's just not us looking at that isolated piece on Valley View, but it does have a couple of conditions attached to it and that is, we really need to get the State Aid Office's approval to go from three lanes to two lanes. And, and once we know if that's possible, then we go and have a public, uh, uh, hearing on it or whatever we decide, a, a, a open house, whatever we think is appropriate. And so that's what I, that's the message I think we need to convey to TLCs. We're on board, here's a couple of issues we got, we're gonna deal with them and then we'll be, then we'll be back. And I'm, I'm hoping that's enough to hold them in there with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar potential grant.
Mayor, could we at the same time, um, include in the motion so, something about the fifty, the Wooddale segment to get things going now? I don't know if the...
I didn't hear that they wanted to change in Wooddale. I heard that they wanted to change in phase three, the Valley View.
And what I also heard was that what they were looking for at this point, obviously there's going to be different action needed for different, uh, phases. And, and I understand Member Brendel's frustration. But what I think TLC is looking for, and one of the members of the Bike Task Force who met in that work session with us emphasized that it's really one phase, yes, it has these three parts, can we work on one? Because we have recommitted support in the past, now the question is, what does that support translate into in terms of action? And I think, uh, approving that Valley View conversion, subject to any, um, approval by the, by State Aid standards or by MINDOT, according to State Aid standards, which we have, it, as we're discussing, is preceded by an analysis and numbers that I think would fulfill that request or requirement, that there be concrete action taken on one.
And I think to your point...
I want bonus, I want a bonus action tonight so that we can really show it and maybe...
I think if, if we tell them we embrace the whole, uh, process or the whole project, uh, and on its designated route. What I understood was that, um, as Member Bennett said, uh, and I think, uh, you stated before, Wayne, uh, in our work session, that, uh, the issue of Wooddale Avenue, whether it's share the road or dedicated lane, you've been able to work that out with TLC. That's gonna be a, a non-issue. So it's really that three to two lane conversion that's the potential problem. Otherwise, we can embrace it and figure it out with them. I just think it's good that we tell them we embrace the whole project.
Early, let me clarify that, um, Mr. Mayor and Council, is that early on in the conversations between the two applications with Steve Clark, um, is that he, he'd indicated to me that that would be no problem. I don't think that is gonna be a no problem or no issue with the TLC down Wood, Wooddale of not having Bike lanes. I think they're, they've changed their philosophy or whatever over the last few years, that they want Bike lanes and, and not the Cheryl's and, and things like that.
They're talking about the objectives, they wanna more completely meet the objectives of the program, which is to increase Bike ridership, which is what Bike lanes do and not Cheryl's. So that's why I'm trying to say tonight, if we could add a bit to our motion, I know you're shaking your head, but...
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, I'm shaking up and down, not excited.
I was talking about Member Slinton.
He's cracking at me.
But to, uh, to have the ETC come forward, do an open house on Wooddale as well and come forward with a recommendation on that segment as well. We could direct them tonight. Now we come forward with two directions, one is on the Valley View segment, the other one is on the Wooddale. And then the TLC will see our good faith efforts on both segments. Then all we have left is 54th.
I think the most important thing is to start the public process. Because there's been reference to a public process, but it actually has not been started. So I think we need to, need to, uh, formulate, I don't know that we formulate that process tonight. But I agree with you that it needs to be formulated soon and started. An open house would be, I think, a good way to start it. Anecdotally, again, I did experience this summer, that parking lane on Wooddale being used by skateboarders, bicyclists going in both directions. So there was recreational use of it by a lot of school age, I think it was in the spring, so it was, school was just out, um, for the day. And a lot of middle school age students in that lane going both directions. We know that there's usage on that roadway and that there's recreational usage. What we need to be talking now with the neighborhood about is, and the city, because it's such a major route to the pool and to Southdale, how can we make that route south, uh, safe for all the people in the community who need and want to use it, including children and teenagers?
That's why I don't, I don't wanna be... That's why I don't, I don't want to be too incremental now that our time's up. And what would be the, you know, the, the negative to directing ETC to maybe start that public process on another segment at the same time, since we know that that's going to be, you know, some issues are going to come up there?
So, so if the direction again, if, just to reiterate, is to start the process or to recommend to us what the process should be so that it could be started, uh, if not yet this summer and I think we're running out of time, early in the fall, um, would that be, would that be a restatement of your recommendation?
In terms of the ETC starting a process?
Recommending what that process should be so that it can be started.
Would, um, recommendation, as far as I'm concerned, could come anytime, but I, I'd be reluctant to, uh, have a process started until we heard from the State Aid Office.
Right, that's, that's right, yeah, that's true, that's, that's...
I mean, I think it's, you know, but now back to Wooddale, I think that is really problematic. I don't quite know how to deal with that problem if it, if it can't be share of the road. I just think there'll be a tremendous amount of opposition to a dedicated bike lane on Wooddale.
The trouble is the blocks are really long, they're small houses, they have, they have, a lot of them have only one car garages. It's not like they can park more than two cars in a driveway. I see Kerry over there nodding his head and I, and they only can park on one side of the road. So I, if being, if getting this money eventually comes down to the fact that Wooddale's going to have to be no parking, I think you got a problem.
Yeah, I think we do.
You still have parking on one side of Valley View even if you go from two, three lanes to two lanes because it parks on the same side, the east side that Wooddale does. But I'm sorry, I just think...
If, if we keep the language broader and not embrace the language that you talked about on Wooddale and then let, let them come back to us and say...
I hear direct, well, they would have to come back and say, well, then you need to include Wooddale.
You know, Wood, Wooddale brings up an interesting point though about the value of parking facilities, um, what, how they're used in certain, on certain segments and whether there are alternative uses for the road that might be higher and better. We haven't really had, we don't have a policy on it, we haven't had a community conversation about it. So...
We, we can't do...
That's what that gives us the opportunity to do.
We, we cannot do on Wooddale what we're doing on your street, Seventieth. I mean, it's just...
Well, right, because it's...
We don't have the, we don't have the geometry available.
There is, the, um, East River Road in St. Paul has a bike, one bike lane. It's, uh, I haven't experienced it in other movement around the Twin Cities, but it has one bike lane, one direction. And then it also has the off-road recreational path. And sometimes people will be riding the opposite direction on that path. But the, the, um, actually it's a self-facing or a self-traveling bike path because it's adjacent to the curb. And I don't know if other communities have used those, I don't know if that would be an option here. I know it was something that we did discuss with West Seventieth Street and at that time said we couldn't. In this instance, we do have a sidewalk and then we have the, can we talk with TLC about a one, a single lane, especially if you combine it with a sidewalk?
Well, why don't we, I mean, isn't that an issue for another day, really? I mean, we can't, we, we can engage in all the supposition we want about what they might agree to, but let's, let's just put it on them, put the onus on them to tell us what they'll, what they'll accept from us. And if they come back and tell us, you gotta have a dedicated bike lane on Wooddale, well, then we better think about having a big public hearing because, uh, that'll be a lively discussion. And, and I think this council could probably decide right then and there that it's just not going to happen because I don't see any way we can have a dedicated bike lane on, on Wooddale unless it was shared with people parking. And, uh...
You know, I think...
That's, that's probably not acceptable to them either.
I think the Edina Transportation Commission would appreciate the vision and guidance of a consultant's vision to help them with their process. And if they guide us into an open house and they have that preliminary design up on the boards, just like happened for the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail, and invite the public in to look at those boards and put their Post-Its in and tell us where they're most concerned and what they would prefer, that would at least give us some give and take and that would precede a public hearing that, um, would give us, I, I think it would give us a lot of information.
It's good faith that we're considering all the options.
Right, exactly.
Not discounting anything in advance.
Right.
And I think the ETC would appreciate being able to have some input as well.
Yeah, I do too.
What about, uh, this, we heard upstairs that, uh, they chose not to go down Lyndale, but they went down Bryant. Well, what if, what if we approve this conditionally with the items we've discussed, just looking at the three to two lane conversion? And then let staff engage in a conversation with TLC. A possibility would be that we get off Wooddale as soon as possible, once you get south of Fiftieth and you run, let's say you run Kellogg, although that, that stops down at Sixtieth, doesn't it? Doesn't go through, nothing goes through. Nothing goes through. The only thing that goes through is Wooddale. Go Wood, Wooddale to Fifty-Eighth.
St. John's.
St. John's.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
Mayor, maybe you're right, maybe we, uh, do our, our due diligence tonight on the first segment and then staff can get back with the TLC and have another conversation.
Let's have some staff input here before we take some action. What, what do you, what do you think? What are your, what are your thoughts on whether we should notify TLC, uh, of our intent to secure the Bike Boulevard Grant over the proposed route, subject to us securing, um, approval by MinDOT State Aid Office of the three lane to two lane conversion between Wooddale and Crosstown? And then, uh, if we get that approval, having a public process acceptable to the council?
I think that's a good approach. You know, I think the other thing you need to reiterate with the TLC is that you're not shying away from bike lanes and bike facilities in the city of Edina that you, you support them much more so than any other community around the, in first range suburbs. So I, I think that's got to be reiterated with, with the TLC's that, yeah, you're, you're serious about biking facilities and we're trying to make this work and, and then go, and then go through that, that whole process with our residents.
Sure, so, uh, if they're serious and we're serious, let's figure out a way to get it done.
Right.
And it may not be on the routes we've talked about, but let's try to hang on to the funding and, and get something done. So, um, what about members of the council? If we approach it that way, would that be acceptable for, for now? Member Bennett, you got some...
Well, I was the one who asked the question that had already been asked and answered in the joint meeting, the work session with the Bike Task Force, which was, can, will they accept a change of route? And I think the answer that I had heard was no. I am familiar with Zenith and do know its width. Is it the intention to on Zenith have parking as well as bike lanes?
That, the north, the north...
Fifty-fourth Street?
Yeah, the north-south segment of Zenith would, the, the city of Minneapolis would have to take a look at that and, and analyze it and bring it the rest of the way up. But that, that was the one way that we, we brought this forward is, is to connect into Fifty-fourth and bring it over to Zenith versus going up Wooddale to Forty-fourth and then tying into, into Minneapolis South of Forty-fourth.
Because one of the ideas that we discussed at the work session was Fifty-Eighth Street, which is now already striped with bike lanes and, um, and could retain those moving forward. But I understand that with the creek on Zenith, that doesn't provide that connection. Could provide other connection with, with Minneapolis, but not with that connection to Zenith.
Right.
Members Sprague, you want to think out loud a little bit?
I'm just thinking, once we get past this first step, what else is left engineering-wise? I mean, there's a number of sticky points along this route.
Well, well, one is, I, I think that we need to have a discussion with the TLC about separating out the, uh, the funds so that we could use some of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering services. I think that, that has to be brought up with them. And, um, as far as the, the analysis that we would do for, to, to bring this over to State Aid, I, I have enough funds in my, um, general budget to cover that, I have no problem with that, uh, under professional services. But, um, I, that's, like I say, I, we need to have that discussion of, with them and how do we go about, um, doing that quickly? To, to separate that, else we get, get an engineering firm on board. Because we don't, you know, we obviously don't have the capacity on, on staff to do this with all our other projects going on, so...
Let me ask you a question on, so where does the Wooddale issue sit? I mean, is it, is it, is there an assumption on the part of TLC right now that it's going to be a dedicated bike lane or shared the road, or share the road?
I think it's somewhere in between there. I, I have not had a conversation, like I say, since the last council meeting with, with Steve Clark about Wooddale. And I, I don't know if, if Councilmember Sprague or, or other folks that have had a conversation with Steve Clark, if that, if he's mentioned the Wooddale.
I'm just wondering if our, our motion ought to, our action ought to include, uh, language that if, if Wooddale from Fiftieth to, um...
Fifty-fourth.
To Valley View is a selected route, that it'd be a share of the road concept. Because I don't, I don't foresee us ever putting a dedicated bike lane in on Wooddale.
Wayne, what about one bike lane? Is that, uh, Member Bennett brought that up, is that, is that, you know, even feasible?
I don't believe it is, I don't believe that we have enough room in there.
I don't have enough room.
Yeah, with in there, yeah.
Okay.
By, by putting a share of the road concept in on Wooddale in our motion, I mean, it kind of lays out what we can do if they want to go down Wooddale. So they don't, then they won't assume that, that because we didn't address Wooddale, we're accepting their notion of it's going to be a dedicated bike lane.
Right.
Because if, if we're mute on it, that's what I'm, if we're mute on the issue, that's what I'm worried about. And I don't see us ever putting a lane, a dedicated bike lane in there.
So you remove the ambiguity and put it to the test?
I think that makes sense at this point, I think, to, just to try to hold on to that kind of funding and then take parking away from, what is that, six block, very long blocks of housing? And it's, they're parking for both sides, it's not just one side parking. It's probably not logical for that kind of a dollar trade for us. Um, if we want to do a share of the road along there, we're going to have to figure out how to do it ourselves if they can't accept share of the road.
Well, and that's segment two. Segment three would be Fifty-fourth Street. And theoretically, I understand that with pavement condition as it is, that was raised, um, when the matter was before us, before with sharrows. But with reconstruction of Fifty-fourth Street slated for sometime in the coming future, um, I would anticipate that we could reconstruct it to include bike lanes on both sides. And given its proximity to Arden Park, the proximity to the creek, it would be a very good location for having that kind of facility.
So are, are you suggesting the interim measure is Cheryl and then we go to bike lanes?
We're, if we're, again, trying to indicate good faith and sort of see what they, what TLC, transitable communities will and will not accept. I, again, if we are asking, if we are going to MinDOT for permission to, um, convert three lanes to two in the Valley View, Wooddale area, we have recognized that it is not going to be possible to remove the parking from Wooddale, but on Fifty-fourth Street, which is segment three. It still leaves the technical stuff at the intersection with Trunk Highway sixty-two.
Right.
But that is, everybody's aware of the difficulty of that issue and I think people will work together on that. What's, what's within local control is more Valley View, Wooddale and Fifty-fourth. And if we can commit to Fifty-four, on Fifty-fourth, we will eventually have the bike lanes. It, they may not be bike lanes until the roadway is reconstructed because of the condition of the pavement on the edges of the roadway. And rather than do extensive work on those edges, if a full reconstruction is slated, it, it would, that would be accomplished with the full reconstruction.
Let's ask staff, what are your thoughts on, on Fifty-fourth? What we, what's feasible versus, uh, what's in the, uh, grant?
What we feel is feasible is what is actually in the grant, which is a, uh, bike lanes, I believe, in that, that, that area.
A bike lane?
Bike lane. And when you get to the Minnehaw Creek with the, uh, stop signs at Minnehaw Boulevard, um, eastbound, I, I think that's feasible to, in the reconstruction, when we redesign that roadway, is they actually have, um, where bike, where the, the cyclists don't, do not need to stop if they're going eastbound. If they're coming westbound, that they would have to stop because of the Minnehaw Boulevard at that location. So you do like a little bypass, a little port chop and a bypass lane on it, so. So that, that's an easy one, in my opinion, to tackle.
And, and in terms of the connection with the roundabout at, at Valley View, Steve Clark said they, they are okay with bikers going right into the roundabout. Uh, so we wouldn't need the additional facilities. I know it's not optimum according to some, but I'm, I'm actually comfortable with that. Is staff comfortable with that as well?
Absolutely, and on any of the single round, roundabouts, uh, when a cyclist enters a roundabout, you're taking over that lane, that travel lane essentially, because a typical vehicle is only doing fifteen miles an hour at, you know, fifteen to twenty at max. And a cyclist is anywhere from ten to fifteen or eighteen, depending what, what level they are. So, so yeah, they would take over that lane, lane of travel. So we're very comfortable with not providing an additional bike facility around the roundabout.
Do you think we have to opine on every segment or do you think we could remain mute on Fifty-fourth? In terms of our action?
I, I, I would say that if you're, if you're commenting on the other two segments, that you could, could say that Fifty-fourth...
Good comment on Fifty-fourth as well? Okay, so what would the language be on Fifty-fourth? Would it be a dedicated bike lane on Fifty-fourth?
Per, per the, for the application, yes.
Per the application? Okay, and then, Mayor, Member Brendel?
Between Wooddale and France, at least half, I'll bet at least a third, if not half, of Fifty-fourth is currently under construction.
Well, ac- actually, Fifty-fourth is actually not under construction. They're going out into the intersections to make utility ties and such. And those will actually be repaved here within the next month or so.
Okay.
And then Fifty-fourth Street being a state aid...
It just seems like it's under construction.
Well, it's dirt.
I know.
Fifty-fourth Street being a state aid roadway will, like we say, I think it's 2014 or, remember on plus or minus there is, is for the reconstruct on that one. So, so we'll be, be, uh, looking at the redesign in, within a year or so here.
Mayor, I like the direction you're going with this because we're going to give firm direction tonight and it's either good enough to meet the specifications or not, we get the question answered, we have a firm commitment, subject to, you know, the engineering and, and that's it.
Okay, let me, let me read something here to the council. This may work based on what we've heard. Our action would be that the city modify, or, excuse me, city notify TLC of its intent to secure the Bike Boulevard Grant over the proposed route, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the city, the city securing approval by MinDOT State Aid Office of the three lane to two lane conversion on Valley View Road between Wooddale Avenue and the Crosstown. And number two, that portion of the proposed route on Wooddale Avenue be designated as share of the road for bike use. And number three, that portion of the proposed route on Fifty-fourth Avenue South be constructed per the application to TLC. Uh, and four, a public process acceptable to the council on all aspects of the grant be held, if the State Aid Office approves the three lane to two lane conversion on Valley View Road.
I would also, I would add bike lanes to your verbiage on Fifty-fourth, uh, dedicated bike lanes. And I would also add, um, that the segment, the connection to the roundabout will, will not have separate facilities. So they're clear on that decision as well.
Which, which portion is that?
And on, and then on the segment, um, how would, how would we state this? On the connection to the roundabout at Valley View, there will not be separate, um...
Bike facilities.
Bike facilities. Share of the road, is that how you would say that?
Yeah, share the road or take over the lane.
Share the road where?
On the connection to the roundabout at Valley View, it will be a share of the road scenario with no separate bike facilities.
Connection between Valley View and Wooddale?
Nope, on the connection, uh, from Valley View to the, the roundabout at Seventieth, there...
Okay, oh, I'm with you, okay.
There will, it will be a share of the road scenario with no additional bike facilities there.
Okay, so the, the, um, fourth condition then would be, uh, that the, um, portion of the proposed route involving the connection between Valley View Road and the new roundabout on Seventieth Street, uh, be a share of the road concept. And then the fifth one would be the public process acceptable to the council on all aspects of the, uh, uh, route if the State Aid Office approves the three lane to two lane conversion on Valley View Road.
Firstly, it's if the public process part of, can be, that we commit to it, but I don't think we have to send that to TLC.
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't think that's part of, of what we send to TLC.
Where, once we have the, the commitment from TLC, we're getting the money and, and from MinDOT, then we can move forward to the public process? from Mindot, then we can move forward to the public process.
I think it is important to link it to the approval by, um, the, to the State Aid Office at Mindot, because I think it would be premature to hold it until we have a decision.
Oh, agreed with all that, but I just don't think that has to be part of our submission to TLC.
I, I agree with that, Members Swenson.
Okay, so we could, uh, I don't even know, I don't even know if a separate motion would be necessary, but we at least know that, that's a predicate to having any public process created. Okay, do you want me to reread it then, or?
Nope.
Okay.
Second.
All the questions.
Excuse me, according to my notes, Member Sprague made the motion initially, and we did not have a second.
No, Member Sprague is making the motion.
All second.
Okay, thank you.
All the questions.
All right. What'd you say? All right, um, further, just, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say nay. Period. Thank you. All right, um, we're on to the, um, uh, proposed item for tabling eight D. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this item is a recommendation, uh, from the Energy and Environment, uh, Commission regarding the solar panel, uh, project. That project has previously, uh, come to the council, uh, and received an endorsement from the council for directing staff to, to go forward and to organize it as a, as a project, and bring it back to the, to the council. This project has a couple of, uh, different grants submitted in it. Uh, when we organized this project and brought it back to the EEC, uh, there were some, uh, there were some circumstances that occurred during the process that, uh, uh, made some impacts on the payback period, in fact, lengthened the payback period to the point where a number of EEC members thought the payback period was so long it, it no longer, uh, warranted their support. Uh, so that's why at their last meeting, they voted not to recommend it to the city council. Uh, after that, uh, meeting, there was some additional discussion, um, with, uh, some of the manufacturers and vendors of this, of, uh, the solar, uh, products that, uh, were under consideration. And they have provided revised costs, uh, that brings, substantially bring down the, the cost of the project and bring it much closer in line to, uh, payback periods which the council had seen, uh, previously. Uh, so what I'm asking for tonight is for council to, uh, table this, uh, item until your August 16th agenda, uh, which provides staff some time to, uh, put maybe some final, uh, uh, final, uh, details together on this particular project with the hope that, uh, we are able to bring it back to you, uh, with a recommendation, uh, from at least the chair of the EEC and potentially, uh, more members of the EEC as well.
Questions for Manager Neil?
Yes, sir.
Members Sprague?
I'm, I'm just looking over the, I, I was looking over the proposal about the energy efficiency section. Um, how is that going to move forward? And my, my, my concern is that these involve buildings that may or may not, um, you know, one is the Gulf Dome. We need a $500,000 infrastructure for the Gulf Dome, and this involves some improvements of the Gulf Dome. We haven't even decided on that. So, um, how do we avoid, you know, spending on an, an asset that may or may not be utilized in the future?
The, what was included in the, uh, council packet, uh, tonight was, uh, a list of something called Facility Improvement Measures, or FIMs, um, that were put together, uh, by McKinstry. Uh, we're still talking about that concept with, uh, the EEC. Um, but the solar project could be included in that list, or it could be a standalone proj, we're going to look at it also as a standalone project as well. Including in it, in that list of, uh, FIMs, uh, allows that project to be considered under something called the Guaranteed Energy Savings Program that, uh, is allowed in, under state statute, and, and really takes the energy savings created by those, uh, by those projects and finance, uses that as the financing vehicle for the projects themselves. And, uh, there are some advantages to, to financing the solar project within that structure. Uh, however, they can be financed outside of that structure as well, and we're looking at both of those options right now.
My, my concern is about underwriting projects for facilities that may or may not be used in the same way and/or exist in the future.
Right.
Kind of like items in the CIP that we've delayed because we're still having a conversation about our entire, um, public facilities.
Right. Agreed. Yeah, but I think the emphasis here is primarily on City Hall.
Right. I would characterize most of those, um, facility improvements as kind of basic stewardship sorts, sorts of things that, you know, it's a lot of caulking, you know, between the roof and the wall joints and, and, uh, basic energy conservation. But there are some in there that we, um, we're looking at that have a, a greater, uh, greater role than that.
I think it's, um, worthwhile tabling this and coming back, uh, to visit about it another day. I know that our Energy and Environment Commission folks have been working hard at coming up with a, a solution that gives us at least a 20-year payback, and I think that's required on a performance contract by state law.
Yeah, it is.
Have to be less than 20-year payback.
That's what my city attorney tells me.
So, uh, I had a meeting today with some folks, and I think just understanding the, kind of the lay of the land better, and all of the credits that are available, and the, and the money from Excel, I, I'm pretty optimistic that, uh, by the 16th of August, we'll see a proposal in front of us that, uh, makes some sense and gets us within that acceptable statutory payback period on a performance-based contract.
As am I.
Yeah. Okay. So is there a motion to table, um, eight D? Till August 16th?
Second.
All right, thank you. Uh, discussion, all those in favor of tabling eight D until August 16th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay? Carry. It's August 16th, 2011. Um, Edina Transportation Commission recommendation for the France Avenue corridor is the next item on our agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I have a few additional, uh, documents, uh, that were put on your DAS this evening. One of them is, uh, some excerpts from the Edina Promenade, uh, study, and the second one is the federal, uh, application, the 2007, seven application for the France Avenue pedestrian bridge. Um, here again tonight, um, part of my discussion will be to forward a recommendation, um, as, as carried by the Transportation Commission in our last meeting, and part of it is to bring this, uh, councilmembers up to speed, and part of it is to respond to Councilmember Sprague and, uh, the discussion that the council had, uh, back in, uh, May, asking the ETC to look a little more in depth at the France Avenue corridor and, um, make some comments, recommendations, some insight back to this body. Um, so what we did is we looked at a number of, uh, past reports and studies. Uh, there was, uh, the first one, kind of going chronological order here, was the Local Traffic Task Force, looked at the Southdale area in, in some detail at that time. Uh, the second study was the Greater Southdale Area Study, um, done in 2005. Um, and then the third one we looked at was Edina Promenade, does Urban Design Study Plan in 2007. Um, then, uh, the 72nd Street Ped Bridge Application. And then finally, um, the last two of the France Avenue Corridor were studied by Hennessy County in 2009, and then Nymal Creek Trails, uh, through Rivers Park District, um, Preferred Alignment in 2010. So all of these documents, um, range in size from, you know, five to, um, 100 pages or so, and they all, uh, at, at some level have taken a look at pedestrian movements in the Southdale area, uh, traffic issues in the Southdale area, um, other items that related to this. And I think what it, uh, what struck the ETC as they were reading through these, and the discussion centered almost exclusively on the pedestrian crossings of France Avenue. Uh, the discussion, uh, didn't center on the traffic volumes and how they really flow up and down France Avenue, or how the east-west streets operate York Avenue per se. It was mentioned, but it, it was certainly down on the list of priorities. Um, they were concerned with the pedestrian crossings, whether those were, um, at grade as indicated in some of these plans, or whether they were, uh, grade separated as indicated in some of these other documents. So, um, really, uh, in the discussion, I guess, kind of circulated around those two topics, should it be at grade or should it be a grade separated? Um, and this is a graphic of showing the, the proposed grade-separated crossing. Uh, this was the 2007 federal grant application exhibit, and was actually awarded at just over $1 million, and I shouldn't say awarded, but appropriated $1 million, um, to the city of Edina, uh, to further this construction. Um, the discussion, take a step back, how come we ended up with a bridge here, or how did this come about? The first time this was kind of looked at was the, um, Greater Southdale Area Study. It was mentioned in there that they were actually looking to cite two locations, uh, potentially for some ped, ped crossings, uh, grade separated. And then it was, uh, kind of expanded upon a little more detail in the, uh, in the Promenade Study. And they looked at the 66th Street, and, uh, they looked at this, uh, 72nd Street location as well. And there was a number of reasons while this, why these were kind of cited as the best location, um, we'll kind of get to that in just a minute. Um, so after much discussion, I kind of distilled down the issues that were concerning the Transportation Commission with, um, the grade-separated crossing. Why, you know, why are we, their question basically was, why should we move forward with this grade-separated cross? And we believe that there's, uh, a much greater need for improving at-grade crossings, um, at this locate, at these locations. So, th- they felt that there was, um, I guess that their overall consensus was they felt there was a lack of safe pedestrian crossings on France, um, that the high cost of a bridge, the $1 million in federal, uh, funding, would still need to be offset by, uh, one to four million, or somewhere in that range of, of local match. Um, would it have impacts in one location where at-grade crossings would be less expensive and could be implemented at six, uh, 65th, 66th, 69th, 70th? You could do multiple locations down the, down the corridor. And then it is not directly connected with the Nymal Creek Trail location. And then, um, like I said, their at-grade crossings are really what should be, uh, enhanced. Um, you know, staff, um, through our discussion, um, tried to cite some of the reasons why we, why some of these studies we think are actually, have some very valid points in them. And one of them is that, um, the residents of Edina, the people that live west of France Avenue, it's been kind of reiterated in a number of these studies, have less access than the residents that live in Richfield. We've made improvements to the Promenade, we've made improvements to York Avenue Ped Underpasses, that have really done a great job of making that connection to the east a lot safer, a lot more inviting, uh, it's got a running, or a walking path and a separate biking path. Uh, and so that connection is, is there. You've got the farmer's market, the Centennial Lakes, uh, work your way up to Target and beyond. Um, but the residents to the west have France Avenue as this barrier. Um, so what's the best way to get them across? There's going to be a barrier there regardless, the, the road is what it is to some degree. Um, you'll have some percentage of the population that will, uh, will choose to cross at grade, but you have other, uh, segment of the population that's going to refuse to cross because they don't feel, and, and even enhancements to at-grade crossings are going to give you enough. Um, so that's where the grade-separated kind of comes in. Um, the location at 72nd Street is, actually has some grade separation, which is actually very beneficial with the bridge, uh, six or so feet higher on the Byerly side. With that, there's not sidewalk there currently, there's some grade separation, really isn't a pedestrian-friendly location, and, uh, that's almost a good thing in, in when you're talking with the bridge, you're, that way you're going to give more, funnel more people to actually use the bridge than to cross at grade when there's a bridge just half a block away, so to speak. Um, we did talk about the large walking and biking area to the west, um, and then it, we are within a block of the Nymal Creek Trail, a location. When this middle in 2007 took place, there was not a finalized location for the Nymal Creek Trail. Um, it was looked at anywhere from 66th Street down to 77th Street. Um, they had, uh, they have land, since landed on Gallagher Road, uh, but, um, this one-block separation would be potential that there's, uh, we've been, some early discussions from the property owners along that corridor about, uh, making that one-block connection a, a possibility and a reality. Um, this kind of shows the walking shed, the red lineup in there, you know, to off to the right would be kind of the bridge location, as is being proposed, and, um, the, the kind of the yellowy, hazy areas, about the 600 homes or so that would be expected to be able to utilize this as a potential crossing location. Uh, you can see down here at the park lawn, and then up Gallagher, that's the location of the current Nymal Creek Trail, uh, Preferred Alignment, as we speak today. So we're really talking about this one, uh, this one-block section of how to, how to make this gap work. Um, you know, we talked a little bit too about the pedestrian network, that there's a, a great pedestrian network, um, and here's a bridge location shown through the middle, uh, which is referred to as a spine in a lot of these studies, and also the kind of conductivity to the east and the Richfield. A lot of sidewalks up York Avenue and a lot of the other streets, however, um, the east side of France Avenue is limited in sidewalk, uh, and also the crossings, uh, west of France are just, are certainly more limited. They're signalized intersections, uh, however, they are not as, uh, I guess they're not meeting the needs, so to speak, of, uh, what the commission and, and other groups or, um, uh, other studies have since kind of looked at. Um, and here's a better, uh, location of the Nymal Creek Trail, and we're, we're looking at this location in here for the bridge location as well as the Nymal Creek Trail. Um, so after discussion, um, like I said, the ETC really wanted to focus their efforts on, um, they carried a recommendation to reiterate their prior recommendation that the bridge not be built for lack of information and high costs, lack of public input, not knowing the conductivity, and will not serve users on France Avenue, lack of justification, not warranted for use, and not judicious efficient use of public dollars. Um, staff, um, respectfully kind of, um, has a different recommendation here, and our recommendation is that you, um, that we have been, uh, granted this $1 million, uh, money from the federal government to move forward, and that, um, we may not be able to fully vet out some of the concerns of the Transportation Commission in their previous recommendation without taking the next step, without going forward with a proposal, uh, getting some feedback from consultants, starting to refine this process, going through the public process that we just talked about in the previous discussion, um, to really understand, uh, this, this, this issue here. Um, one of the things that kind of got brought up too is, there's a million dollars of federal money, can't that be kind of slid around in the corridor, or can't that be used for other type of, uh, features? At this point, there's very limited ability in that. Uh, the federal government, um, has a little stricter guidelines than the TLC dollars, there are less flexibility in, in those. Um, this would be similar to what happened up at the Interlochen Bike Trail, where we asked to use those same funds for somewhat of a different use along the same corridor, and the answer was, no, there's someone else that, um, was second in line behind you that is now elevated, and, and we'd asked that, uh, the money be reallocated to that project instead. So, we're really looking at it from a standpoint, um, there. That's the quick overview of, um, of, of where the ETC stands, um, with their concern on this, what staff's recommendation is, and, um, I guess maybe a further explanation of, uh, when Commissioner Sprague asked the ETC to take a look at this corridor and what it meant to them, and that's what it meant to them, was, uh, pedestrian crossings on France Avenue.
Member Sprague?
How much do we have budgeted in the CIP for this bridge? Our, our contribution? Because I saw it when we were looking at the TIF, the Centennial Lakes TIF. Is it 3 million?
There is.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's actually, it's allocated in three locations in the, uh, CIP. Um, they're a little bit vague in their definitions. There's 3 million in 2011, I think there's 2 million in, in, uh, 12 or 13, and then there's another 5 million, um, in 2015. I don't know if those all go to the bridge, but it's under that Promenade headline.
How much goes to the bridge?
Well, we, I wasn't involved in actually putting those in there, but I'm, but I'm thinking for another million and a half that we would match up between engineering and, and construction, that we'd have about a $2 million bridge or so.
And here it says 3 and 1/2 million, somewhere it says 3 and 1/2 million for the bridge, and the grant's only a million. Isn't that 2 and 1/2 million for our take?
I would characterize what's listed in the CIP as kind of placeholder.
Yes.
Money. If you look in the CIP, um, it's under the HRA section. It, it lists the numbers, and it lists a reference to Promenade, but it doesn't give any other detail than that, and, uh.
And Commissioner Sprague, I think you're referring to there's some wide-ranging scope of what the bridge could cost, and, um, I think there were some ideas if it was a more showpiece type of bridge, uh, it may be more expensive.
Right.
If it's a more, uh, standard utilitarian-type bridge, it would be in the lower ranges, as talked about. So I think what we're seeing right now that those, I think we're a little too really to know what the cost would be, it's going to be based on somewhat, on the design.
Because I, I'm, I'm looking in the notes from the June 16th ETC meeting, and it says, uh, orig- original estimate was 2.3 million, but it could now be three and a half million. So that would leave our portion at two and a half million.
That's quite possible, I think we'll know more.
If we, excuse me, the, those types of, of grants from, I actually have a, you have to spend at least 20% more, because it's an 80/20 split, I believe, on those. So, so even if we can do it for a million eight or whatever, we'd, we'd still be okay on that. But what we're anticipating that's going to cost at least two million or more for a bridge like that. And I think a few years ago, then Assistant City Manager Heather Worthington had it at about five to eight million to have it more of a showpiece bridge. But, but I disagree with that and said it could be a lot cheaper than spending that much money on, on a bridge.
One question about the CIP. I actually have five years of it in front of me, and I can't find this item. Now, you say HRA CIP, but what we have for projects and funding sources by department does not include HRA. So this is not an item that I have seen in any of the years that we've reviewed this. Just to, it's not been before us.
It's, there's, there's a general reference to Promenade improvements in the current CIP. But again, it doesn't give any detail about what they are.
Can you tell me what the, the reference source is, because I've looked.
Is that the current, is that the current one?
Yeah, it's a little marked up.
It's on page maybe 90 or 91.
Page 90 will give you Promenade Phase Four, page 91 will give you Promenade Phase Three, and page 92 will give you France Avenue corridor improvements. I think those are the three that I would.
And Manager Neil.
Manager Neil's saying it's the placeholder for.
You have 20 million in our Centennial Lakes.
No, no. That figure is, is a figure we've talked about, if we don't take anything out of it, it's going to accumulate about that much money by 2015, I think, 2016.
So we will have 20 million?
If we don't spend any money out of it between now and then.
Okay, so in terms of highest and best use of funds, I just, I, I'm going back to Southdale, because we started to have this conversation about the Southdale area. And Mayor, you talked about your vision for York and beautifying that. And as I was driving to the Y yesterday, I saw people going from one bus stop to the other, across the middle, and walking on the street. And there's so much that can be done in that corridor. And I also think about the Continental and the senior building and going there during the campaign, they're telling me they walk right across the street and kind of hobble across. And so there are some unmet needs there, unmet needs there. And there's also that, that spur of the promenade coming right before that big section where people go across, where there's trees and it's beautiful. And I see that vision coming down, just as you do now. I now understand where you're going, where you're going with that. On the same token, on France, as I look more holistically at the whole corridor, would I prefer, you know, a bridge, a sterile bridge that, that does nothing for the streetscape and continues to let France operate as a wall for pedestrian and bicyclists? Or do I want to embrace complete streets and living streets and have more of a pedestrian-centered model of design? Where we bring, it's really about control. We let the pedestrian have some shared control and access of the street at the street level. Along with those at-grade crossings, you also get landscaping and beautification things. And wow, what, what will that do to transform that whole corridor and continue the, the incredible work that the previous council did and that you were, had the vision for this promenade? So, Member Bennett sent some pictures around of this Tucson crossing. I drove over to Eden Prairie and looked at some at-grade crossings at Eden Prairie Mall, and there's, there are striped crosswalks, but at the ends are bricked landing, wide brick landing spots for pedestrians. And, you know, that, to me, is the direction we should be headed in, because we can do more with our money to transform that corridor. And we should be thinking about it on France and York, and York, and just keep that promenade feel extending down towards Southdale. The other thing that comes into me then is, is the ring road around Southdale. And as we were talking about what would be willing to fund and not fund in Southdale, and what their plans are for the future, maybe it ties into, you know, reconstruction or redesign of that ring road, which to me, again, is another barrier to making Southdale successful. So I, I understand the ETC is coming from a complete streets model, they're looking holistically. I can understand why they don't want to spend all the money or any money on this bridge, and would prefer to have numerous at-grade crossings. I also think about connectivity to my neighborhood to Cornelia and what that will feel like, giving them three or four different crossing, crossings versus funneling them into a bridge. And if I were there and I were an able-bodied person and there were a bridge going up, over and down versus me just cutting across, I'd just cut across. So those are the considerations that are swirling around my head on this issue.
Member Bennett.
I agree. I was struck with a photograph of Tucson, we also visited Tucson in May, and those havens are used, also pathways and trails. And I note that in some instances, we are missing sidewalk on one of the sides of France. And so I do see that there's a lot of need and opportunity, and would, would like to leverage or use our public money in the way that really does serve as many people as we can with these safe crossings. I also want to note that the access to the bridge is 420 feet. When I said that to my husband, he said, "That's a football field and a half." So, which was kind of my reaction too, but that's a long way, that's a long distance for somebody just to get up to the bridge, then cross and have that same distance coming down.
Thank you. Member Swenson.
So do I hear you two prepared now to, to take this federal grant of a million dollars and just say we're not going to use it? Is that what I hear you two say?
Here's a picture of the Tucson crossing right here. So you can see the, the resident going across the street, and then they would cut over and then go to another crossing. This is a six-lane arterial, and then over, and then across again. And look at that, the landscaping improvements as well. Again, six-lane busy arterial road, and they've managed to do it. So, and in response to your question, I would like to seek alternatives. I think we can get a lot better use of our own money and I.
No, 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 but we don't have the ability to, to seek alternatives to that grant, I think is what I heard from both Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Cool. And I understand, and I understand that. So I just want to know, are you prepared not to take that money? Because we can't spend it a different way.
Yes, I don't want to spend it on bad design. And if it were only federal dollars going into it, it, we have to put our own money at the table as well.
No, I know.
So yes, I'm, I'm prepared to, to let that grant go in, in hopes for a much better and higher and better use of our own funds to transform that corridor. It's kind of the bridge to nowhere.
Member Brendel.
Well, I think the first thing, my, my, my first impression of this is that the proposal is dated 2007. And we've learned a lot since 2007 about pedestrian movement. And we continue to learn about innovative ways to move pedestrians. This, I, I guess my main concern is it, the bridge doesn't do anything for the person wanting to cross France Avenue, to get from one side to the other of France Avenue. And that is a problem. And it'll.
I'm confused. Why doesn't it do anything for?
Because if they're, if they're already on France Avenue, they have to go to 72nd, they have to go to the back of Sunrise.
Okay, no, I just needed you to explain what you meant. I didn't get it.
Yeah, they have to go to the back of Sunrise, and then over the bridge, and get over to Byerly's. And if that's not their destination, then they're going to go from there to their destination. Whereas if we had good quality, high quality, at-grade crossings, I mean, they could cross anywhere and get where they're going. Right, multiple locations. I think the beauty of how the Promenade crosses York is that it crosses underneath. And, and it's easy, you're at-grade, you go down, you come back up to grade. And I, I don't know why that couldn't be done here. So it, I, I just see it, you know, the, the original conversation about this, and the, it may have, I have no idea, but it may have come from the forum that, that I was involved in back in 2005 even, with the, a bunch of us got together and talked about the Greater Southdale area. What are the problems? What are the tie-ups? What do we need to look at? And, and it's when the thought of taking Centennial Lakes and keeping it going, which may be where the Promenade came from. And, and also at that time, we talked about how to move people across France Avenue, and a bridge was mentioned. So it may, that may be where the idea came from, but it's not an idea that really has passed the test of time for me. So I, I really think what we need to do is look at the grade crossings, time the lights so that it allows, so that the lights allow for safe crossings, and a better oasis in the middle. If somebody gets caught in the middle, a better oasis, a safe place for them to wait for that next light. I think that's where our priorities ought to be.
I have a comment. I like both ideas, and I'll tell you why. Because I think they both have uses. You know, the mayor just said that, that tunnel that we made under York was a multimillion-dollar project. I use bridges all the time. We have one that goes over to the outdoor pool across 62, and we have two that go across 100 that have spirals going up and down them, that I use for walking. So I like bridges because I can take a dog, I can take kids, and I can control them. So I can see two uses. I can see a bridge for the neighborhood families that want to go over there, and they want to be contained, and they want to end up in a safe spot over near the promenade where it dumps out right by it actually, which is where the walkway would. And I see a lot of use for that neighborhood getting over to use Edinburgh and Centennial Lakes and that area getting across. I also see uses for that great picture you brought of the Tucson Bridge as an alternate way at two other locations. But I don't think we should limit ourselves to say, gee, this Tucson way, you know, I know what we go through when I talk to Director Cool about trying to get some buy-in to change France Avenue and trying to get a shared cost with it, and it's not even on the radar screen for state funding. So, yeah, I think the Tucson idea is great, but getting there is going to take a long time too. So I would like to use, what did you use, a multimodal? Would that qualify for crossing France? And I would say I would support a bridge, and I would support other crossings at other areas. I don't think we have to have two or three bridges going down there. But I think for that neighborhood, we need a safe way that's contained, that you don't have a three- or a four-year-old riding a bike in your stroller and you're trying to get to the island in the middle. I'm sorry.
I, I understand, I understand Member Swenson's points. You asked about the money, and I'd like to respond quickly to that. Because whether the money is federal, state, or local, it's taxpayer money.
I get that.
And, and I think people, people get that too. And so in terms of the value, they want us to be making decisions that have value to them wherever the money source is coming from. In terms of two or three crossings, I think there probably are really four or six points, where if you think of 66 going south and you kind of count up the intersections where people really want to move around the community. I think it's, that's where I think we really should be leveraging our money, whether it's TIF money, whether it's the local money that would otherwise be going to the bridge. And then the last point that I would like to make about a bridge is you described the bridge over 62 and the two bridges over 100. And that is, when bridges are built, they create a perception of the roadway they cross being of higher designation. And I think it doesn't serve the safety of the people who are crossing at-grade, who really are the majority of the people, to have that change in appearance or perception of the roadway. It becomes higher designation, I think, in the eyes and minds of the motorists driving it. And I would, France Avenue has enough trouble, I think it can be calmed with the kind of landscaping and living streets approach that we're talking about. I think a bridge would really counteract that.
Yeah, interesting discussion. What's the timing on, on moving forward if we decided to do something about this bridge? And I'm thinking about some kind of bifurcated process, maybe somewhat akin to what they're doing over at the small area study, where we maybe don't do a request for proposal, but some sort of pre-indicator, or maybe a request for proposal is just fine. The, the part of your recommendation that I get some discomfort over is that the city moved forward, the second part of the recommendation, that the city moved forward with the construction of this pedestrian bridge. I, I don't mind finding out what it's going to cost, and so that we know with a little bit more certainty what our local match would be. Then I think we could make a decision that was less in a vacuum, because everybody's raised good points here. And it may be at the end of the day, if it seems affordable, we'd want to do both, create several at-grade crossings, and also look at this bridge idea. But I'd like to know a little bit more, and I think the rest of the council would too. What's something like this going to cost? If we decide we want to do something that's special for that neighborhood, you know, it's going to cost more. I think just doing something like is done over the crosstown falls way short of the mark from an aesthetic standpoint, as far as I'm concerned. I'd rather have it look somewhat like a piece of sculpture if we, if we do think about doing it. But I am really persuaded about the notion of, this, I'll call it the beautification of France and York, as part of this whole process of looking at the district, that, you know, we look at landscaping, we look at lighting, and, and we work with, hand in hand with the county, and we'll have to, because they're county roads, so. But I spoke again with somebody from the county this morning at the Southwest LRT Management Committee meeting, and they said, "Have Wayne call Jim Group." You know, they're, they're doing some at-grade crossings right now in Hiawatha that provide those safe harbors for people to get partway across and then to make it all the way across if they can't make it all the way across in one, in one shot. And, and I see that problem down by Gallagher and, and France, where all these young families are trying to get across from the apartments to the west, over to the promenade so they can walk. And it's every night, there's just all kinds of people trying to push strollers and, and bring seniors, bringing grandma along with her, with them across the street. And it's a, it's a, it's a tough go in one fell swoop, and there's not much of a landing pad there for them to stand. I mean, they can kind of stand behind a, a pole, I think, and then they got to make the, the next run. So I, I think on-grade is going to be an important part of this whole process, but I'm willing to look at the, the bridge done right and affordable, if it makes sense. Member Brendel next, and then Member Sprague.
Looking at the bridge as a destination for people who want to cross France Avenue, let's say for example, they are coming from a place where they drive, actually drive to the bridge, to get access to the bridge. What, I can see that causing some concerns about parking. Entering on Lynn Mar Lane, Lynn Mar Lane is, is already a challenge. And, and then the parking at Sunrise is private parking. So I think, I think we need to be really sensitive to where, if in fact we do this, where is that, that point? And what, you know, we want to make sure we've got enough capacity for people who, if it's raining, would park somewhere and walk across.
Yeah, I expect it to probably be mostly a walking shed, but Member Sprague.
We do have, I mean, we can, we can, right now, tonight, we could, we could have a high and a low estimate for the city's portion of the, of the bridge, right? I mean, on the low end, it would cost us X, on the high end, it would cost us Y. We don't need to know a definite story. What's the minimum we would have to kick in? Let's say the bridge was two and a half.
We don't have those figures with us tonight. And I, I think listening to the conversation as a dual-track would probably be in line, and maybe, maybe you go up for requests for qualifications on, for folks that have done those X. those X-grade crossings and bridges and pull somebody on board to, to, to come up with some different designs and different costs and bring it back. We have till March of, of next year to have some type of a plan in place, basically, for, for this. So that's going to be going by pretty quickly on a project like this. But I think that we, on this one, that we could ask the Met Council for a, an extension to that, to that date.
So we need an extension on the sunset date?
Yes, yeah.
They've been pretty liberal on one extension, you know. Member Brindle?
How is the Edina Transportation Commission going to be involved from here on, getting their advice and their take on their recommendation?
It would be, be my recommendation that they're, that they're heading this up, that, that they're the, similar to Seventy Street, the Northeast Study, that they're, that they'd be the ones that would be heading up the, the studies at the at-grade and, and the bridges. It's not going to be staff-led.
So, so on a request for qualifications, does that, does that let us have some professionals in town both look at grade separation and, and at-grade facilities, get some sketch plans so that we can see some, some ideas and then get some preliminary idea of cost?
Yes, you could, you could approach it that way. That's more of a request for proposal, but it, but you could ask them for some, some different ideas of at-grade crossings or even ask them for, um, um, some, some presenting their work that they've done in other communities. And maybe it's to find out who did the Tucson one and, and, and go after a national firm on something like this.
The speaker at the Active Living Workshop that Councilmember Brindle and Mr. Sullivan and I attended last fall would probably have some ideas. One of our Transportation Commission members is with Blue Cross Blue Shield and she was one of the organizers of the conference. So I think we probably could have some good connection to people who specialize in that kind of thing. I also would really, if the question hasn't been asked of the funders, the funding source, I would really like to know if there can be a conversion of those funds. I did read through the grant application thoroughly. I had, I had a hard copy of it at home and it looks like it is very facility-based. Now, the question is if the facility, if the facilities are shifting to at-grade rather than a bridge, again, can that money be used so that we really can make an informed decision when it comes back?
It really depends. When I went before the, the Met Council on the interlocking pathway, that, that it was really what, what was the next project down the list? Because it was, it's a point system that they rate these on. And so they'd have to go back to when we made the submittal and we could look at that too to see what was the next project on the list that didn't get the funding.
There are times when the, when the TAC will advise the TAB on an amendment to a grant, but it's, it's unusual. And, and if we go over there for an extension on the sunset date, we better have a good reason because it's a good cause shown standard. And usually it's something like they couldn't complete a condemnation process in time. They had to, they were still negotiating with a private property holder.
Exigent circumstances.
Yeah, there's some serious circumstance that requires something be extended for a year.
I, I actually would support the RFP if it involves sketches and the more holistic look. I'd love to get something going on this France Avenue corridor. And Mayor, it's your fault. You got me thinking and we were talking about Southdale and New York. I mean, I, I would like to see some, some teeth put into this vision. So I would support the RFP if that's the case.
And just to make sure, just because we put out an RFP or asked for proposals, it doesn't mean we have to accept any of them.
That's correct, yes.
And I also think that the ETC would, would be highly interested in, in being involved and that would be a great partnership for, for staff and ETC to work on.
I agree. All right, so do you need any kind of motion tonight, Director Hool, or do you, do you have enough direction?
I would, I would say that you make, make a motion to, um, work with, that staff would work with the ETC like we do on a normal basis and that, that you would go after a request for proposal or a request for qualifications for pedestrian crossings and a, and a potential pedestrian bridge on France Avenue.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay. Carrie. All right, interesting discussion. All right, correspondence and petitions, anything other than what we have in front of us?
No.
Thank you. Council comments, Member Brindle?
I have several. Valleyview Road and Sally Lane, do we have any action there? What's the status of that intersection?
Councilmember Brindle, what I was hoping to bring hopefully for the next council meeting is, is more of a process of how we look at sightlines down right-ofways and that, that we can agree upon a, basically a flow chart of, of how we, when somebody requests a sightline and, and how we go about requesting a homeowner to trim back their, their vegetation within the right-ofway itself.
Okay.
So that we have, have a standardized process in place before we pursue that.
Great, thank you. One of the consent agenda items tonight dealt with Waldorf Nevin's cleaners and the payback of their, of their big water bill. And thank you, Manager Neil, for taking that on and coming up with a solution that is going to be workable for, for us to get paid in a six-month period of time. And look forward to keeping that business running and having them pay their bills. Crosswalks to parks. In tonight's Traffic Safety Committee report, there was a request for a crosswalk near Todd Park. And that kind of speaks to, to my, um, personal goal of having a park overlay district and having, in that park overlay district, the warrants are different. They're not regular traffic warrants. And, um, and there should be crosswalks to get safe passage to parks within neighborhoods. And I would like to see the, the Edina Transportation Commission begin, if they haven't already begun, work on a pedestrian plan for the city of Edina that has within it safe passage to parks, to neighborhood parks, that would include something akin to a park overlay district. And, um, and I, I don't want to see that take years to happen either. I mean, man alive. Luke was eight years old when I called and said, you know what? I want him to get to Braemar and he's going to be twenty-eight this month, so I don't want this to take years. And then finally, my last one, second to last one. We got a letter in our packets from Bob Coteen, who has been serving on the Nine Mile Creek Watershed Board for many, many years. And he is not seeking replacement, reelection to his board position. And I just want to make a shout out to Bob to say thank you. As I have visited different waterways that are in the Nine Mile Creek Watershed, they'll have a plaque and his name will be mentioned as someone who was instrumental in, in the improvements of that area. So he's made, he's made just a huge impact in Edina and beyond. And finally, the fifteen thousand dollar ship money that is available to us through Bloomington Public Health, how are we doing on that? Are we securing that? Who knows that answer?
I don't know right offhand, but I know the people that know, so I'll find out.
Okay, I'm just, I, I don't want it to slip away. All right. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thanks also to Bob Coteen, many, many years of service on the Heritage Preservation Board and at the historical, on the, at the Historical Society, volunteering and on their board as well as on the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Board. And I think that's the only commitment that he's retiring from at this point, but did want to note his long and extensive service. Two, um, two development-related matters. One is that I had some correspondence with some residents and then with Director Teague regarding the use of sketch plans. And understanding that if there's formal notice, it starts a clock running, but residents still would really appreciate a chance to be involved in commenting. That early comment on the Bishop's Walk process was quite interesting and gratifying to not only people who were involved, but people who are watching the process as well. So is there a way that we can give notice that allows people to send an email, make a phone call? It's not a public hearing, we're not opening a public hearing or starting that clock running, but we are giving people enough information that they can give us their thoughts.
Member Bennett, are, are you suggesting maybe that we put on the notice that they can email comments to edinamail@CI or call this particular person? Is that?
Well, some clarification from Director Teague. I believe sketch plans are not normally, there is no notice, a formal notice of a sketch plan, am I correct?
Correct, there's no notice, there's no application required. It's just simply them submitting a plan and a narrative to go along with it.
So how would we publicize the opportunity for people to make comment?
You could establish by policy that when staff receives a sketch plan application, we could do something similar to like we did with the Water, seventy-five, was it Seventy Five Hundred York, where we went out and solicited just written comment? There wouldn't be a public hearing held, but.
Right. And also when, when we have neighborhood organizations, neighborhood associations, then a neighborhood association, for instance, could be contacted. The ones that exist could also be contacted. So I think we can come up with ways to provide that information to people that does not trigger the clock running. Am I correct?
Well, that, that's, that is sort of the key question, isn't it? Because the more, the more formal you make that process, the more, the, the greater the chances that it does start the, the clock running. And that gets away from the purpose of the sketch plan process in the first place.
You don't want to end up with a public hearing before the public hearing before the public hearing.
Again, you're not taking testimony. It's just that if people have, I think that, um, the concern that a lot of residents have is that by the time the formal notice starts, by the time that formal period happens, there's been so much work that's been done with a, with a normal, with a regular development proposal, that sometimes it's difficult for changes to be made or for resident testimony or correspondence to have much impact. And they have seen, now we've done two sketch plan reviews, I think they've both gone well. I haven't heard from the first presenter subsequently, but again, that process was perceived as being very resident-friendly.
The resident I heard from on the second one was upset because we heard from a residence around her and she's involved as a piece of the land for the Bishop's Walk one. And she was upset that residents around had talked about it, which I found kind of interesting.
Boy, this would be much easier with a neighbor association because you could just email the sketch plan and then they could distribute it as they saw fit. But in, we don't have that luxury today.
Why don't we send it back to the Planning Commission? I had a breakfast with Commissioner Fisher this morning and mentioned this issue to him relative to Bishop's Walk. And, and I think they would, in the context of doing the other work on the code, they'd probably wrestle with this issue a little bit.
And again, my intention is not to start a clock running, but it is to, it is to try to work with our community because I think that, that kind of advanced work is helpful for the developers. I think it's helpful for residents and I think ultimately it's helpful for the decision-making process.
Thank you.
And the second thing is that in terms of more, more stuff for the Planning Commission or code work, I think we have a tool for affordable senior housing and it's Plan Senior, that, the Plans Senior category. The use of it in the last few years, I think, has caused it to be misunderstood and we've even seen some applications come forward recently asking for PSR designation that I don't think are what at all was originally intended. So I think, and Chair Grabio mentioned this at the Planning Commission meeting, it would be, I think, good for the Planning Commission to look at this issue of code, where, where are big gaps? We've had a gap identified. Is that gap resolved, addressed through use of PUD? Is it addressed through use of, of creation of a specific section of code? Is it addressed with modification of an existing section of code? But I think that it would, again, be helpful for us going forward to look at that. And then I would like it, I would appreciate if the Planning Commission would take a look at PSR. We do have questions about affordability in our community. We know where some needs exist. Is this a tool that we still want to have in our code? Does it not make sense anymore? And I think that clarity, again, would be helpful for developers, residents and city decision-making.
Is your focus on, I mean, PSR is independent living communities, is it?
No, it's Plan Sen-, it's Plan Senior Residential, but it was created in the mid nineteen-eighties specifically, if you look back at the minutes, to create, to encourage developers to build affordable senior housing.
Not with services, not with services.
No.
It's independent living.
There was a, a minimum unit size for livability. There was a maximum unit size for affordability. And that in return for building within this range, developers were able to build more density and were able to also build less parking. So there were these trade-offs and benefits, but it was a mechanism for affordable senior housing. And there were two projects built under that designation. Summit Point, I think, in South Haven.
I think it was written for those projects to be really high.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. It was, it was one of those, they wanted to build the project, we figured out a.
Okay, well, since then, since then, it's been, it's been applied a couple of times to assisted living and there's been some mostly smaller units, some larger. But I guess the question is, do we, do we still need and want it in the code? There's no point in having something in the code that.
What about this discussion about the continuum of care? I mean, we've got, you know, that's independent living, we've got nursing home convalescent, we don't have assisted living, which is the bridge between the two lifestyles. It hasn't been defined in code. I mean, is that part of this conversation?
Well, again, it, it is part of the conversation, but again, Plan Senior was not independent living, it was affordable independent living. And, and that affordability, I think, that has been lost. Otherwise, people could build under PRD. And, and there didn't need to be an age designation attached to it. So the question is, my question is, what sections of code do we need? What are we missing? It's like a facility, facility.
They would, they would look at senior.
Send it to planning, let them look at all those senior-related issues.
Yeah, senior housing.
Yeah, we, well, how, well, and, and housing in general, I mean, we know we have the PRDs. So what are we, when we're seeing these applications coming forward, and we have seen a couple come forward recently, what is it identifying in our code by way of lack and what is identifying in terms of problem susceptibility to misinterpretation, that kind of thing?
All right, Carrie, I think you have a handle on it.
We do. It's on our list of things we want to tackle. We can just move it up more towards the front.
Okay, good. Members Swenson? Members Sprague?
Planner Teague, they're also looking at parking regulations, the review of all of our parking regulations, that's on the docket as well?
That is.
Okay. Driving through Eden Prairie recently, I looked at the beautiful signage all over the city for public facilities. And what do we got to do to get that quality of signs here? Who do I have to convince to look at this issue? Because they are just wonderful. They're lighted. Tell me about the process and how that happened in Eden Prairie.
The, um, the council authorized staff to do a, a branding project, which was probably not, I don't know if that's something we would need to do here as well, but that was an entirely new brand. And so there were park signs all over that community that had various kinds of logos from the sixties and the seventies and the eighties and nineties. And there was a, the city appropriated enough money to do a clean sweep and replace all the signs with the current branding that you see today.
So how can we have a discussion about that? Does that come up in budget time or?
It could, yeah. I don't know that that's, I haven't consulted with Mr. Caprios to see if that's on their count. see if that's on their calendar or what their, or where those, where that item might be in our CIP, if anywhere. But I will do that.
Could be a work session on branding.
I was just going to say, is anyone else up here interested in tackling this? I mean, if you've seen the signage out in Eden Prairie, it's a sight to behold. I mean, it's really handsome branding for the city. We don't have, I don't think we have a branding issue with our logo, but we do have a signage issue.
Well, there isn't, there isn't anywhere where you come into Edina where there's a nice welcoming sign with beautifully landscaped, if you get off at 50th and Vernon, nothing. Come in by the hospital off the crosstown, nothing. You know, we could look at some of those things in terms of signage and then internal branding. So maybe that's something you could put on a list for future time.
Sure. Okay, yeah. So, okay, that's the first item. I was talking to an electrical inspector. He said that Madam Eide is still doing their own electrical permits. They've identified this as a future revenue source. Is that a feasible alternative for us to consider?
It might, it may be. At the moment, we have turned that responsibility back over to the state. But we will take a look at it and see what its prospects might be in the future.
What's your hunch, based on your experience in other communities?
I have no other experience because the state does that function here.
Never happened before, okay. There was an article in the paper about a council member in Minneapolis and a project and some bias that was shown in a quasi-judicial proceeding. And I know that we're working on our bylaws and policies for boards and commissions. I assume we're going to have council bylaws as well. We've talked about ethics before here and ethics, statement of ethics as part of our bylaws. And I looked at the planning commission's bylaws and the ex parte communications section and policy, and I think that's something that's worthy of inclusion in council bylaws as well, and maybe even a discussion, a refresher course from Attorney Knutson for all of us for the future. So I don't know if anyone else is, okay.
It's a good article. I thought it hit a lot of value.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we can have a refresher course, and then when the policies are drafted, that could be included.
Well, life is nuanced, and, yeah, there's a lot of life's lessons in that article. But to put a complete ban on us having conversations with developers or other folks in our community on a one-off sort of basis, I think it's a mistake.
Oh, I don't think this was directed that way at all. I think it was the type of conversation and the position, and the position that the council person took.
It was the information conveyed in the conversation.
That's, that's the article. However, the bylaws that Member Sprague is referring to, I think, may have positions or may have limitations that the council may not feel fit well with the council's role.
Well, it was, it was prejudging a matter on which she would subsequently be engaged in a decision-making process in a quasi-judicial capacity.
If it's not a policy, then it's at least a discretion.
That was one of them, but there was a second person who had gotten too involved in a project in the community and not stepped back for their role at the council. So I think there's a bunch of different things. Wouldn't you say, Attorney Knutson, that we could talk about as to separating ourselves appropriately?
Absolutely.
Your role as a city councilperson or mayor.
In quasi-judicial proceedings. And you could cut the developer way, you could cut the public way and be a bias as well.
Yeah, no, it talked about both situations, actually.
I mean, there's obviously tension between your roles as elected officials and your constituents and interacting with them, and your role when you're acting in a quasi-judicial manner, and there's some tension there. And sometimes if you cross the line, things go bad.
So we can talk about best practices and lead at that? Okay, great. When are we expecting the executive summary and the survey to be delivered to us, the Quality of Life Survey?
One month, by the end of this month, probably, by the end of August.
Okay. And finally, the list of questions from the neighbors bring up a lot of planning issues. Is it worthy of us to consider having a work session or a dialogue with these residents about the questions here? I mean, I think there's something to be gained in the conversation. I don't know if it's a, you know, council member, Neil, and representatives meeting, or is it a council session where we could have dialogue? Where does the rest of the body feel?
If, if some of those questions, this is my thought, if some of those questions raise issues of process that the council should discuss, then I think we should have that discussion in a work session amongst ourselves.
Okay.
But to sit and answer directly some of those questions of, you know, why this, why that, why did you do this, why did you do this relative to our neighborhood, I don't think that's, I think that's, it's a no-win situation.
I'm looking more at the, I think there's a lot of process issues embedded.
There could be a lot of process, I think so. I agree with you. When I looked at them as they were speaking, I thought there were some process issues embedded in there too that we should discuss as a council, but not on some sort of interactive basis with-
So how do we take this and move to that? Do you want to think about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of it?
I do, yep.
Okay.
It relates somewhat to the sketch plan issue, I think, which is, when do you involve people and what, and when do you involve people and what do you do with the comments and statements and reactions that people have?
I also think it demands some public information materials. And Chair Janeway from the ETC, unrelated, had sent me some land, land use zoning discussion from the League of Minnesota Cities, and I thought it was great. It talked about the role of the public and what you can do and you can't do. And maybe it's development of some materials like that as well, some handouts for people as they go through a process to explain in layperson's terms what's, what's going on. So I'll let you noodle on that, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Member Sprague made me think about another consultant report, and maybe we got it and I missed it somehow, was the golf course operations.
30th.
Yeah, we have a joint session scheduled with the Park Board for August, Tuesday, August 30th, and the National Golf Foundation will be here that evening to make that presentation. We are, at least right now, I think, planning to do that session in this room to enable us to make a high-quality video recording of that presentation because I think it's going to be important.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay.
Oh, and this, thinking about doing something in this room reminds me of one of the issues that came up this morning in my conversation with Commissioner Fisher, and that was, as they worked on the small area plan study for Grandview, they indicated that they would like to set up this room from time to time like they did in Grandview Stage One for work sessions where they kind of just spread things out. And I think, Carrie, you had indicated to them that the council had said, no, you can't reconfigure the council chambers even for a work session. What?
Right.
Yeah. So that's not sitting well with folks on the boards and commissions.
No.
We expected that. But that is, and we did have the discussion about and why it logistically doesn't work very well.
Is this, is this only in a recording situation or just a work session?
No, I think, you know, work session in general.
Oh, we have two other rooms with large tables and the ability to-
And that was our suggestion as well.
Yeah.
To use, to use those rooms, to use those rooms more fully in that process.
This is being perceived by folks, at least as part of that process, as fairly heavy-handed on our part and counterproductive to the work that they want to do and the transparency they want to have. And how it affects the transparency, I'm not sure. But they were, they were not pleased that they could not rearrange this room to make it work better for them in a work, in a work environment.
The senior center provides some of the same. Granted that it's a lower ceiling, it doesn't have the lobby area, but in terms of organizing around a table, which is, I think, how they, they did two different types of configurations, if I remember correctly. They had the small tables, maybe six or eight of them, that people gathered around in different groups. Member Swenson was here for at least one of those meetings. And then they also did a big table that people sat around. But they, that probably could be, the big table could be duplicated, community room or mayor's conference room. And the small tables could be, could be duplicated in the senior center.
Well, remind me why in a non-televized, non-recorded situation, we can't let them rearrange this room and then put it back together again? What's the problem?
The basic problem is that this equipment or these, the office furniture that's in this building is not easy to move. It's heavy. It's not folding chairs. We don't have the, we don't have tables that are easy to move in and out of here. And at the time of day, when they're here, we typically don't have staff here that are able to assist in putting that together. We have done that before in, because that's why they want to do it. And it has, it does create some logistical issues in putting it up and bringing it back down.
Well, they met over at, the first kickoff meeting was over in Cranger Hall, right? So, I mean, is that, there's AC there now?
No, I think Wayne's got a good idea, and he's got a great room for-
Yeah. We have a very large multipurpose room, and you can even have refreshments in there, which you can't have in here. So we could offer that up to them, just schedule it through our, our staff, yep.
We'd like to get more, we'd like to get more use in that facility.
It's not that you're utilized right now.
It is, yep, yep.
Also, they can see the very nice planning.
And it has the kind of, it has the kind of furniture that's easy for civilians to move around and get in the right setup that they want. And, yeah, it works well there.
All right. All right, some other things quickly. On July 25th, we had our second mileage-based user fee meeting. That's just kind of moving along, a lot of, I wouldn't call it tension, but there's some strong opinions on this whole notion of mileage-based user fees and privacy and, and all the other aspects of it, fairness, the equity issue. On the 27th of July, Manager Neil, I attended the Bloomington, Edina, Richfield Healthy Communities Initiative meeting, and we're close to rolling that out. And that'll happen in September with the assistance of Blue Cross Blue Shield, now that we're through the legislative process for the year. On the same date, I had a meeting with Catherine Bovelt, who is a staffer for Senator Franken about local government issues. On the 28th, I had breakfast with three high school kids that are going off to college. They had breakfast with the mayor thing for a drawing at the all-night party. I guess they bid on it, and I ended up with three really great young guys. The fourth one, no-showed.
How much did you get?
The guy going to Harvard, no-showed, I want to tell you for the rest of-
How much did you get for that item, I want to know?
I don't know. I didn't ask. I was, I was careful about not asking. It might have, might have been only a couple tickets in there, you know, in that bucket. Kevin going to NYU, Julian going to Georgetown, and Drew going to University of Wisconsin. So there, they were some sharp young, young guys. On the first, we had a medical device cluster board meeting early in the morning over at the Biobusiness Alliance. And then I got invited to a meeting that afternoon with the chair of the medical, or the head of the medical device section for the FDA to talk about some of the issues that are concerned to the medical device industry, both here and nationally. That was interesting. It's something the regional mayors are working on. Night to unite, I know you had a wonderful party up in Morningside. I went to one over in White Oaks, gave out, the neighbors over there wanted to recognize a couple of other neighbors that were leaving after 30 years, staying in Edina but leaving. And so Deb and I kind of cooked up a certificate of appreciation, but it made me think about something like All-Star Neighbors or something. If, you know, in certain qualifications where if a neighborhood called, a neighborhood association called and said, hey, we want to recognize these people for the fantastic job they've done in their neighborhood, they may or may not be leaving, but they may have been 30-year residents, you know. Something we might want to think about in terms of recognizing people in our community. So give that some thought. No immediate action needed on that. And then, I'm going to the Hindu temple tomorrow night. I know that Josh has been there already. Went last Sunday, I think, they told me. And some of the other folks have talked to them. They're going over there this weekend. They've got their big celebration from tomorrow night through Sunday. That's interesting to, I'll be eager to get over there and visit with them. And then I put in your packets, I asked Deb to put in your packets this Southwest LRT Management Committee PowerPoint. And the only reason I did this was because it's a nice, kind of a 10,000-foot view of what's going on and what the process will be like. So just take that for a reference piece. And I just want to tell you that in conjunction with that Southwest LRT Management Committee work, Sue Haig, the chair of the Met Council, was in Washington and met with the Federal Chance Administration. Two key things that we need to be concerned about here on this Southwest LRT line. Number one is the freight relocation issue. That's got to be resolved before, they'll probably approve us going into preliminary engineering, but before they allow us to enter final engineering phase, that freight relocation issue up in St. Louis Park has got to be resolved. And then, secondly, concerns over the state being able to operate the line on a long-term basis. Where's that operational funding coming from? They're insisting that that be resolved too, based on what, how they saw our state legislature perform this year. So another way that we're being affected by the inability to get the work done on time and seeing some level of cooperation there. So two big things to work on. And that's it for me, Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. One, we've got the kickoff date of the first Communications Advisory Commission scheduled. It's going to be Wednesday, the 24th of August, 7:00. And we'll be notifying the folks that volunteered to serve on that later this week. Just a reminder, a couple, your schedule is getting very busy for the next couple of months. We've got the joint meeting with the schools on Monday, the 15th, and that's in our building. And I think we said five?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Is it upstairs in the community room?
It is, yep. So we're hosting them. And then the next night, of course, we've got a council meeting and our work session is on the draft budget. So I want to thank Council Member Bennett for inviting me to the Morningside Night to Unite. It was a good group and beautiful evening. And I'm rolling out a PowerPoint presentation for employees on the results of the Quality of Life Survey. And we do, we deliver the first version of that PowerPoint in seven short hours at Public Works. And so Wayne and Karen will get the first view of it as well. So it's a, it's a presentation that takes some of the basics of the survey and then tailored to individual departments. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Did I prompt anything else from anyone? All right, we stand adjourned.